No, just mosquito. Just mosquitoes, all I have, yeah.
Hey, we're ready? Shane, we looking good? I got their makeup on. Welcome to your Board of County Commissioners meeting for January 28th, 2003. We will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, may our lives be filled with peace, prosperity, and love. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to your own mother, who is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda are approval or correction of the minutes of January 21st.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, ayes have unanimously. Proclamations and presentations for today, we don't have any, but we do have some announcements. Doug, would you like to read the announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Tomorrow, there will be a joint meeting between our county commissioners and the Martin County Commissioners at 1:00 PM at the Indian Riverside Park, second floor of the Dockside Pavilion, 1707 Northeast Indian River Drive, Jensen Beach, Florida. The annual strategic planning session is going to be held on January 30th, 2003, that's this Thursday, in room 101 at 8:00 AM. And that's where the county staff will be presenting the five-year budget plan.
And we do welcome public attendance?
Yes, we do. And then, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a workshop with staff, the fire district, constitutional officers, and Thomas Lassito and Associates on February 20th, 2003, at 2:00 PM in conference room three to discuss the administration complex campus plan, which is for the property that we're now located on.
Okay, very good. Next up is general public comment. If any member of the public wishes to discuss any item that isn't on for public hearing, please come forward. The two public hearings we have relate to public transit and the fifth cent tourist tax. Any other item, or it's on the agenda, or any item you wish to discuss yourself. If it's not on the agenda, please come forward. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, my name is Jean Hearn. I reside in Indrio. I come before you this morning after reading the paper and seeing Boating Life featuring our area and after Scenic America featured our area. This is the kind of publicity I urge this commission to follow through with, that we can thrive and bring quality people into our community. And you know I'm all referring to the cargo port expansion. Hopefully, I know the next 20 days are going to be very important. And I hope that you all have the courage to go forward with 67 acres, protect it from further cargo expansion, go with a quality plan like the Haskell Plan. I'd urge you to ask Mr. Pruitt to please read the Haskell Plan, like many of us in the community have done. And I think he would have to agree that this would be the best route. If not, you know, I think I urge you to go on without Mr. Pruitt's support. If he chooses to go that route, be brave. If you don't have that in you to do it, I really urge you to go to a referendum. I think the people of this community realize the quality community we have. And I just hope that we will go forward and protect it, just like we would protect our own daughter. I don't think you would ever allow your daughter to be exposed to damage or harm. And I think our lagoon in our community is on an upbeat. And I just encourage every one of you to try to make it work without the support. Don't let one person control our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anybody else, yes, sir, come forward and state your name and tell us what's on your mind.
Okay. My name is Harvey Phillips. And I was here two weeks ago, and I spoke to the members of this commission. I live at 120 River Palm Drive. And it's in the Indrio area of US-1. And I had mentioned my concerns about the proliferation of automobile businesses and junkyards. And Mr. Barnes had suggested that I get in touch with his staff. Your staff immediately left the next day and was nowhere to be found. I spoke to every single person that I could find in the commission, 10, 20 phone calls, voicemails. I did have some people come from the permitting department. And they observed what I was talking about, but I asked Mr. Barnes to come and I asked all the commissioners to please come there before it's too late and observe the situation. I've called the Environmental Protection Department and they're on to this situation. They've been testing and they're going to continue to test. But we need a cohesive effort. This is very disturbing. There's an immediate concern that I have. There's a Joe's Auto trying to get a permit to operate right outside my front window. He has an existing nightmare on the corner of US-1 and Indrio Road. Now whoever's in charge of the permitting, I don't know who's who because I don't have my list of all the names. I didn't get a chance to go home this morning. But it's, I mean, it's unbelievable to try to get people to pay attention to this situation. I'm asking for a moratorium before this guy comes in and destroys the Indrio Reserve. I have your own brochure about the Indrio Reserve in front of me. It's 423 acres of scrub, scrubby flatwoods, mesic flatwoods, depression marsh, basin marsh, and lake. The lake is right outside my window. This guy wants to put this obscene car repair business in front of my window and poison the lake. These junkyards are already poisoning the lake. It's an absolute urgent situation. It's not a joke, it's not a funny thing. But I'm asking you all to try to get in touch with me or to come there and see with your own eyes. Let me take five minutes of your time and come and see. You have every type of species on earth there that must be protected. It's absolutely urgent. I'm only a member of this community for a year and a half, but I'm taking it upon myself to let you know that you have a treasure there that you have to work to preserve. It's unbelievable. I don't know, this guy keeps trying to go ahead with his Joe's Auto repair when he has a history of toxic pollution. I'm gathering the evidence, I want to present it to you, but it takes a little time. So I may ask you to please not let this guy, it's at 5280 is where he's trying to move, US-1. 5280 North US-1 is Joe's Auto Service. So I invite you to please come, take five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes. There's so many ways to hook up all the natural areas that you just bought. You said you bought one along Dixie Highway, right at the end of the street. Well, there's a passageway that the animals must use to get from the lake to the river, to the forest behind it. And it's a real tragedy if you let, you have an area that's a natural area for them to migrate through. It's so urgent that you do something about it. In five minutes, I can't present the whole thing, but I'm inviting you to please contact me. I'll give you my phone number, is this being recorded?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my phone number is area code 561-389-5036. I invite you to come and please take a walk and look with your own eyes. Now tell me you've seen it before, because this is the most precious thing. I don't know how much time I have left, but I also would like to tell you that there's a cloud hanging over the entire community. And I'm sure you're well aware of that nucleus site that sits not too far from here. And I don't know that you realize that this is something that must be taken apart and dismantled. And it's only the beginning of an invitation to you to please use your power to realize that this thing must be dismantled and stopped immediately. You have to do something, because it's a cloud that I could see over all the mines of all the people in this area. God bless you, thank you for your time. Please get in touch.
Thank you, sir. And as I explained to you over the telephone, your concern is, sounds like that somebody is trying to build in front of you or beside you on your property. And if you wish the public to consider buying the parcel rather than allowing it to be developed, you're entitled to submit that to the land acquisition committee. And they will consider this along with the other parcels in the area. As you know, we've bought many parcels in that area that, and it's got to be based on biology, not because somebody's getting ready to be built in front of. So please stay in touch. You can apply for that land to be purchased. We don't have much money left, but we'll certainly consider it. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Charles Grandy, President's Counsel of Hutchinson Island. I'd like to thank Commissioner Barnes for reminding everybody that it's time for our biennial review of the impact fees. I know this is not an easy subject to champion because there is a small number of very effective special interest groups who lobby hard to defeat realistic impact fees. It's kind of strange when one considers the current building trends in the county, such as Westchester, Tesoro, Waterford, the Claridge. Port St. Lucie's mayors have long contended that the answer to the city's ad valorem tax problems is to raise the value of the homes being built rather than raising the tax rate while continuing to build smaller homes. I couldn't agree more, and that's exactly the impact that the fees would have. I'd like to remind the entire commission of what's in our comprehensive plan. And I read briefly from 11124 in the plan. Future development shall pay for 100% of the capital improvements needed to address the impact of such development. Future development's portion of the cost of capital improvements needed to address the impact of such development shall be determined in part by the county's impact fee ordinances and supporting studies. Impact fees shall be reviewed every two years to assure that the provision of capital improvements needed to address the impact of future development will not increase ad valorem tax rates. In conclusion, I'd like to observe that our position has changed significantly as a county. Not long ago, we were seeking developers and had to offer concessions. Today, witness such developers as Westchester and Gin Corporation. We're incredibly attractive to development, and we really need to give away nothing anymore. Now's the time to make our impact fees realistic and correct, as was prescribed by our comprehensive plan. Our current taxpayers and homeowners should not have to look at long-term capital infrastructure requirements like the $150 million that the Board of Ed is talking about over the future years for school, new schools, and worry about the impact on real estate taxes. New development should be handled, should handle the new development infrastructure requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
For the record, my name is Jeff First. And I am the originator of the St. Lucie County impact fees. And it took a number of tries from the school board, county commission, Port St. Lucie, and finally, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Board to get us to really do it. The problem we face now is no different than the problems we faced when we did impact fees. And that is that it is very expensive when you have new development. It's expensive to your infrastructure, it's expensive for those capital needs that will never be paid for by the amount of taxes they'll pay ad valorem. And no matter how good it sounds when something's being built, if you take the amount of taxes they're going to pay times the years, there's never really an adequate calculation for the capital impact and the infrastructure needs that will never be paid out of the ad valorem. Because the ongoing needs always increase as fast as that tax base. What has happened over the years, and the reason the impact fees have not been as effective as they needed to be, is we've allowed them to lag so far behind the actual cost that they're not as meaningful as they should be. And I think it struck me the most the other day when I read an article in the paper about the West Virginia corridor and the dilemma Port St. Lucie's having in trying to imagine how much it costs, where the money's coming from. And then, to make it worse, the planners explained to them by the time they did it, it was going to be a capacity and really wasn't going to fix their problem. It might allow them to catch it. And I think the conclusion by some of the public officials was that, "Well, these are just, these traffic problems are just things that, it's just part of growing and we can't do anything about it and we've got to live with it." Well, that, in a nutshell, is the problem. If you can't identify the solution, don't keep adding to the problem. If you can't justify the impact fees it takes to pay the way, then you can't have the development. I don't care how good it sounds. If it's not paying its way, everybody who's here is going to have to pay for it. And they're going to pay for it by increasing the cost of being here beyond what it should cost to be here, because you're having to pay for this growth. So as terrible as it sounds and as expensive as it can be, if your impact fees do not adequately reflect the cost that that development is bringing, then you can't have it. You don't want it. And I've watched counties do it right, where they said, "Look, we turned away a lot of good growth because it wasn't going to pay its way. We're on the east coast of Florida, our climate will never get worse, the ocean's never going to be moved. People are going to come in spite of whatever we do. It's got to pay, not more than it should, just the amount that it should." So I'd urge you to get the study, get the numbers. They're going to scare some people and you're going to hear all kinds of doomsayers saying, "Oh, if you charge them this, they won't come." No, they'll come. I mean, they'll come because it's South Florida, people want to be here. But if you're not going to make the people pay the cost that they create, all you're really saying to some future group is, "We're going to pass it on to whoever's here." And ultimately, it's the same problem. So it's either got to be built in the front or paid in the back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Think no one else will... Yes, sir.
Captain Dennis Nichols, St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office, want to talk on behalf of the community transit.
Do you want to wait till that comes up, because that is a public hearing? Anybody else? Back to the board. And the first item is...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we continue, the issue of impact fees has been brought up twice. And I just want to say that I do support impact fees, but I think we're being unrealistic if we think that impact fees alone are going to solve our service needs and pay for infrastructure in the future. And let's look at reality, the long-range transportation plan 20 years out. We have a $500 million shortfall. Our schools, I think, are facing a $180 million shortfall this year alone. So if we think that impact fees are going to cure hundreds of millions of dollars in shortfalls, we're fooling ourselves. We need to be looking at how the community's building and promote better development patterns. We need to promote a more diversified tax base and a sustainable economic base. But to think we can continue to grow in a poor way and solve these service needs that come with that through impact fees, we're fooling ourselves.
Okay. Consent agenda is next on the agenda. And the consent agenda, of course, are generally non-controversial housekeeping matters that are taken, there are several items, but they're taken as a whole. But any member of the board can pull for separate discussion or separate vote any of those items. Does anybody have any items to pull for separate discussion or vote? Or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval for consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, ayes have unanimously. First item up is the St. Lucie County Public Transit, the possibility of forming a taxing unit for public transit and bike paths and sidewalks. Who on staff is going to introduce this?
I will, Commissioner.
Beth Ryder?
For the record, I'm Beth Ryder, Community Services Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Today, we're holding a public hearing to consider creating the St. Lucie County Transit and Non-Motorized Transportation Municipal Services taxing unit. This is the third public hearing on this issue, but for the benefit of the public, I would like to give a brief recap of where we have been and how we got to this point. Prior to 1992, there was very minimal transportation in our county. In fact, there were only three vans, and they were funded through the Older Americans Act. And you had to be 60 and older to ride it, or disabled. But since there was very minimal funding, it really didn't cover very many folks. Then, a number of actions occurred that got the buses rolling on our streets. The good news in 1992 was the state began allocating dollars for the transportation disadvantaged population. This first grant was $50,000. The Board of County Commissioners was appointed as the Community Transportation Coordinator for our county and entered into a contract with Council on Aging Community Transit to provide transportation. Next. The board applied for and received Federal Transit Administration funding for equipment and operating. Our county was eligible for operating funds from the federal program because we had a population of under 200,000. The combination of federal and state grants, the board funding the match for vehicles and transportation disadvantaged grants have expanded our transit to where it is today. Our county really has come a long way since 1992. In partnership with our contracted provider, Community Transit, our county applied for and received Federal Transit Administration grants totaling more than $6 million. And that was just for operation of our system, and that's in this past 11 years. The bad news. The bad news is that areas with populations over 200,000 are not eligible for operating assistance. The US Census Bureau links St. Lucie and Martin Counties, and the combined population is over the 200,000 threshold, making both counties ineligible for operating assistance as of October 1, 2003. So we're, both counties are scrambling, looking for another way to fund it. When we realized this, staff set up workshops with the different elected officials. And on June 6th, a workshop was held with St. Lucie County, City of Fort Pierce, and the City of Port St. Lucie. Tindall Oliver and Associates prepared a study outlining all the funding options and the amount that each would raise. In order to put the MSTU in place, all the elected boards must approve, that's the way this MSTU is written, the county, the two cities, and the village. On September 17th, 2002, staff updated the town of St. Lucie Village Board of Aldermen at their regular monthly meeting. The different methods of funding possibilities were discussed, and the consensus of all four elected bodies was that transit is a county-wide issue and a municipal service taxing unit and MSTU for public transit should be considered by the county, the two cities, and the village. On September 24th and October 1st, public hearings were held. Staff was directed to schedule a third public hearing, and that's what we're having today. The purpose was to include additional information on the funds that would be available for bike paths and sidewalks, should the millage be immediately set at the proposed cap of .25 mils. Current funding projection for transit for the next three fiscal years is .09 mils per year. And now, this next graph is really just for illustration purposes. And I want to emphasize that it is for illustration purposes because, as this board knows, transit has been funded and is being funded through 99% of grants. So if we don't get a grant that doesn't come through, these numbers could change somewhat. But this is for illustration matter. As you can see, if we're using 2002 taxable values, if the funds that would be collected over the transit needs up to the .25 cap, almost 36% would go to Port St. Lucie, and that would raise them about $540,000. Less than 1% to St. Lucie Village are about $5,000. City of Fort Pierce, a little more than 12%, or $187,000. And St. Lucie County, 51%, or about $770,000. Facts. Should the MSTU be enacted and the entire .25 mils levy, the cost to a home with an assessed value of $100,000 with a $25,000 homestead exemption would be $18.75 per year. As reported in the current annual operating report, over 27,000 different people rode the system and more than 191,000 trips were provided. These numbers do not include any of the new riders on the US-1 fixed route. St. Lucie County is the largest county in the state without local operating for transit. A dedicated source of funding would qualify the system for additional grant dollars. And each year, the board will approve the budget for the MSTU and set the millage. So they're still, the board still is the ultimate decider on this. And staff is recommending approval of Resolution 0321, which would create the MSTU for transit, bike paths, and sidewalks. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Ryder, before we get started, what is the possibility, if this were passed, of matching grants in the short term and the long term?
We are working on those. In fact, Mr. Anderson has sent up, or is sending up, a packet today to our lobbyist in Washington that very possibly we can get an earmark, we're hoping. Ms. Benet and her department is working on a $470,000 grant that if we get a dedicated funding source, we will be able to get that immediately. The whole way for the system to work, since we've lost this operating dollars, is to have a dedicated funding source, because then we have those dollars to match. In other words, almost any grant that you get, if it has a match and it's a 50% grant, if it's a $500,000 grant, you're getting a million, if you can match it. And a lot of them are not even, I mean, the match is less. So it's so important just to have a dedicated source.
Of course. This is another example, of course, of the federal government passing costs on to the state and to local governments. And of course, the state government passes costs on to local government. And we're pretty much the government of last resort when providing services. So if we can obtain future matching grants, that would certainly make this tax more palatable. Any other commissioner have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if we can back up just for a second and take a broader look at this, we haven't had the item before since several months, I think a recap is in order. Can you help me understand the situation of where these dollars would go? We really have two issues in my mind. We have the existing shortfall. The fact that the new designation putting us over $200,000 has created the shortfall. But we also have the need to expand the north-south fixed route system that's been put in place through grant through DOT and our desire to, you know, link in with some east-west routes. I'm curious to know whether this addresses both issues or whether it's only dealing with the existing shortfalls.
It is addressing both issues, but I need to clarify the fact that first of all, if you do the east-west routes, the economies of scale will lower the cost for demand response so that it isn't near the gap that you would expect by adding the east-west route. Because we'll have the, hopefully, in the future, we'll be getting folks off of the fixed route, demand response, rather, and on to the fixed route. Now, of course, that takes time. And I know in Florida, folks think you're not going to do that. But we did, I did talk with Collier County, who started fixed route, this is their second year. And they're already up to 40,000 riders a month, 1,750 to 1,800 a day. And that's mostly folks who go to work. So that system is, I mean, it works, it takes time. Of course, they started it with six routes, six fixed routes. And they're supplementing, of course, with their demand response, because you always have to have demand response for the folks who cannot ride a fixed route.
If I could follow up on that, Mr. Chairman? The Transportation Board did a transit study. And they laid out a specific course of action that needed to be taken in regards to transit. And I'm trying to find out whether this funding source meets those goals. Is that what this is geared toward? Or are there going to be additional shortfalls that we then have to come back and seek additional funds? I need to have some sense of...
The only prob, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The only problem... The only problem with our charts is that if we don't get a grant, that we, you know, everything is predicated on grants. So, that could raise the cost to us, the amount that we would need.
Okay. But assuming the anticipated grants come in, this will help us deal with the existing shortfall and implement the transit plan that was done through the MPO?
That's my understanding.
Can we confirm that?
Ms. Drummond, where are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Coward, yes, we utilized the numbers based on the Transportation Development Plan to ascertain exactly what the overall cost would be. One caution with regard to it was that the transportation plan laid out the expenditure of funds starting in the 2002 funding cycle. We're actually, at this point, going to only be able to implement it based on the 2004. So, there are some shortfalls in terms of the inability to have purchased, both in terms of the capital needs as well as operating. So, we'll be starting at somewhat of a deficit, but it is reasonable to suggest that what we're looking at right now would be the ability to use that overall five-year plan that's transportation plan outlined.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Drummond.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one last question. Could we have our staff just give us an overview of the funding sources that other local governments have used to come up with a dedicated funding source?
So, in everyone that I've checked, it's been local government. Be it, some of them, it is cities, most of them, it's the counties.
Yeah, as opposed to which jurisdiction? I'm curious what funding source they use. Is it gas tax or other means?
Oh, and, well, some, yes, you're right. Some use gas, I'm sorry. Some use gas tax, some use ad valorem. The MSTU actually has never been put in place in Florida that we've been able to find for this purpose.
Okay, thank you.
What is Martin County's plan, since they were left high and dry as well?
I spoke with Martin County yesterday. They are exploring the MSTU option. They, the Board of County Commissioners will probably fund it this year, and then next year, they will go. But they've already held meetings with City Stewart, and they have some meetings scheduled with the City of Jupiter and the other three cities.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? St. Nun will open the public hearing on St. Lucie County Public Transit and Non-Motorized Municipal Service Taxing Unit. Just the possibility of imposing this for the reasons we stated earlier. How many people want to speak? We have a bunch of people in the audience, and I'd just like a show of hands of how many would like to speak. Got a lot of people, but not a lot of talkers. All right. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right. We normally set the time limit at five minutes, and we'd encourage you to stick with the five minutes and try and even finish earlier, because there are a lot of your neighbors that would also like to speak. But, yes, ma'am, you're first, so come on forward and tell us your name and address and what's on your mind.
I live in Port St. Lucie, a three-angelita, and I have a letter here and an article I'd like to leave with you. I wrote to Governor Jeb Bush this past July. I've only been riding the buses at that time, about six months. I had to give up driving. Now, I did ask Governor Bush if there's something he can do about our buses and help for the drivers as far as pay is concerned. And he was very nice. He handed the letter over to the Department of Transportation, and I heard from him, Mr. Edward Cohen. And I also enclosed an article I wrote to the newspaper regarding the transit system. May I give it to you?
Yes, ma'am. Why don't somebody go get it? She's, no reason for her to have to walk all the way up here. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And we'll enter that in the record. Are there any other comments that you'd like to give us? We'll all read the letter, and it'll be in the record. Anybody else? I saw some other hands.
I'm Lee Dobbins, President of the St. Lucie County Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to speak in support of the MSTU. Hopefully, you received our letter yesterday that we hand-delivered in support of the MSTU. And the reason why the chamber supports it is because we've had a number of member businesses over the years tell us that they've had difficulty with employees getting to work because of the, some of the employees do not have reliable transportation. And historically, our county has had one of the higher rates of unemployment in the state, and it seems it would make sense to have the transportation to help connect some of those employees with the member businesses that need their work. Our one concern on the MSTU is we are concerned about the sidewalks and the bike paths, and that raising the initial cost from nine cents to 25 cents. We do support the sidewalks and the bike paths and feel that those would be a great amenity for the community, but we just want to make sure that that additional cost does not make it less palatable for the MSTU to be passed by the other municipalities. And I don't know if there's been some communication with the other municipalities on the 25 cents to make sure it's going to pass, but we just want to make sure that that doesn't jeopardize it getting passed, because we feel that the public transportation component of it is so very important to our member businesses and to the community that we want to make sure that that does pass. That's it. We thank you for considering the MSTU and strongly support that you pass it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. And while you're there, before we go to the next speaker, we have made some attempts to communicate with other cities, I believe, haven't we? Both options, whether it would include the bikes and pedestrian ways or not include it?
Yes, we have not had a workshop with the elected officials, but we have made contact with the two city managers, and they were both supportive of, felt like their boards would be supportive of it because it was another funding source for their, for bike paths and sidewalks.
Okay. And I think Port St. Lucie had done a poll of what its citizens wanted not too long ago, and sidewalks and bike paths were right up near the top, if not at the top. And I know Fort Pierce has asked us from our recreation tax for money to do a pedestrian way along Moore's Creek, so, and also South Hutchins Island, there's a bike path that needs to be constructed there within the city limits. So, I know there is interest, but I don't know if we've specifically communicated this to them and gotten their response. Maybe-
No, I had not thought best to find out what this board wanted, and we go next. The MSTU has written that if they don't approve it, it just doesn't go through, and we're back to square one.
Back to square one, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
While we're on that topic, we had a workshop with the school board recently, and we've had ongoing discussions in the past about hazards that exist around schools. And I think the idea cropped up that we have no dedicated funding source to even provide safe bicycle and pedestrian sidewalk systems around our schools. And I was hoping, when I brought this issue up initially, that we would actually earmark these dollars in partnership with the schools to try and provide those safety measures. So, I don't look at these as amenities as much as I do necessities. If our children can't walk to and from their neighborhoods to their schools safely, we have a problem within our existing community. And unfortunately, the mentality of the past was to really focus on roads, and we've built our communities for cars as opposed to people. So, I live in Port St. Lucie. A common sight you see is to see children struggling along the side of a road in a ditch, trying to get to and from, from one place to another. So, to me, I really don't look at this as an amenity. It's really a public safety issue for, you know, the children, elderly, whomever chooses to walk. It is an amenity. It can be a recreational amenity, because it certainly provides opportunities for, you know, rollerblading, strolling, walking around, those types of things. But it goes beyond that. It's really a public safety issue as well.
And not to mention the short drive to the convenience store, because you don't have a sidewalk to walk on.
But if we do move forward with this, I would hope that we can provide some additional language about how we'd like to use them, so it doesn't become, you know, used strictly for an amenity. I think we've struggled to come up with a funding source to address the needs of safe sidewalk systems around our schools, and I'd like to see us actually earmark these, or at least a portion of them, so we can move forward with that in partnership with the school board.
Okay. And we'll get back to our speakers now. Next speaker, please come forward.
As I said earlier, I'm Captain Nichols, St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office. Here on this public transit comment, it's kind of like a public issue, a safety issue. Reference to the pickups on some of these, the bus that they're using now is working out real well. I've been attending homeowners' meetings in the Port St. Lucie area for the last six months. The concerns of the people that live in Spanish Lakes, Tropical Isles, and those communities are that the bus pickup is located one across from Johnny's Corner, which they have to get there. And there, again, is another issue with sidewalks. There's no way safely for them to cross U.S. One to get into that area. A lot of these, excuse me, a lot of the parks there all have community centers, would be able to come into the parks, have that pickup area, where the buses could actually come in there and pick these folks up. Probably, the ones that have attended the meeting, 90% of those all agreed that they would be more than happy to ride that bus, pay whatever cost it was for them to ride the bus to and from the stores, and leave their car set in the driveway. Cost of gas keeps going up. That may eliminate some of the traffic problems in that area from Kidderman to Port St. Lucie Boulevard. And if anybody's traveled, they know what I'm talking about, because it gets real crowded just about all day long. So, from that standpoint, they've asked me to come forward from these homeowner meetings and bring that to your attention, that they would like to have these bus pickups in their parks if possible. I understand there's been some petitions signed pertaining to that and forwarded to you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir, and thanks for coming forward. Yes, ma'am.
I was just a little unclear if we were having two public hearings or just one?
Just one public hearing.
Okay. Claire Twombly-Nyberg on Tropical Isle. In October, our mobile home community requested of the Rapid Transit Director, Darryl Drummond, to provide the bus to come into Tropical Isle. We have the approval of our park owner. Tropical Isle isn't easy in and out. We have our clubhouse at the entrance, so a bus would not need to go through the whole community as in some places. We also have a horseshoe drive, which makes it easy turnaround. January 10, a member delegation went to the meeting of the Bus Coalition, and we're advised of this meeting. And I am here to follow up, and I believe a letter was sent to Cliff Barnes for the Commissioners to support our request. I also have here to give to Mr. Barnes and your Commissioners a petition of 300 signatures from Tropical Isle. I will field any questions.
I think we understand your problem, and we appreciate your comment and bringing Is anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Al Ribbit, Executive Vice President, St. Lucie County Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Dobbins, our president previously stated our position. I just have a question of clarification. Our concern about bike paths and sidewalks is not that they're not a good thing, but they may complicate the timing that we need in order to secure grants. And if you'll permit me to ask staff, what kind of timeframe do we need to impose a dedicated source for mass transit in order to secure grants that are coming forward?
Well, there's a $470,000 grant right now that expires, I believe, in the next three months, and it's there just for us. We have it if we want it, but it requires a 50% match. So, that, and then next year, there'll be another allocation. This is a Florida Department of Transportation grant. So, we're needing, that grant will not be available after June.
If the municipalities choose not to support the MSTU because of the addition of bike paths and sidewalks, do we have time to go back to do a dedicated source just for mass transit?
Not this, not this year, I don't believe, not with the advertising that's required. Mr. McIntyre probably helped me on that one.
We, the, if we're trying to create a subsequent MSTU, I believe the requirements are 21 days advertising, so, and then there's a seven-day advertising requirement. Again, if it's a newly created unit and everybody agrees, it could be created by July the 1st.
Oh, thank you.
My name is Mary Greco, and I live at the Cove. It's low-income housing, and I don't have any way of getting anywhere unless I have the bus. I got to go to doctors, and I'm sure every woman here does. And if we could afford to have a bus come and pick us up like these people have done, it would be great. The people that work for this company are great people, and they're very good to us. Even with the crippled people that can't get in and out of the bus, they're there, they're helpful, and we need this bus. It's not a luxury, it's a necessity. We need this because we don't drive. We may be getting old, but we're not stupid. We still need to get around. And I'm sure every one of you people feel the same way. I'm sure your parents feel the same way. We need you. We need this bus. It's not a luxury, it's a necessity. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Cooper. I'm the Senior Service Coordinator for the Housing Authority, and I'm here to support the bus transportation that we have here in Fort Pierce. We have 830 units at the Housing Authority. Most of them are seniors, disabled, and families without cars. So, I'm just here to ask that we continue this service and to put it out where we can also go east and west so that we can reach some of the other families that are not able to get to U.S. One. I'm also here to say that the Housing Authority is willing to have certain stops at their points where we can, some of these families can pick up the bus at that point with shelter, with seating, which is very important for the elderly, because a lot of these stops are out in the open, in the element, where they cannot sit down, or they're subject to the sun or the rain. So, again, we are, I am here to say that I do have the support of the Housing Authority to be able to have the transit, to be able to stop at some of our units. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My address is 2021 Southeast North Blackwell Drive, Port St. Lucie, and I'm here to support the community center buses. The drivers are extremely good to us. Number one, I'm legally blind, and I'm riding this transit from its inception, from it started, and a lot of people who live over on my side. We are all widowed, senior citizens who don't drive. And my idea is, even if the fares are being risen much more than what we're paying the dollar, that would help to increase and to make sure that the buses are on the route. We really appreciate the service, and we really hope that it will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'd like to, my name is Rivera, Gloria Rivera, and I'd like to see if I could make a suggestion. I live in Vista St. Lucie, and I understand that the connector's run, but there's no way for the senior citizens to get to the connector unless the community bus picks us up. Is there any way or possible way that we can have the community bus have a certain time to pick somebody up that wants to get the connector?
Ma'am, Beth, do you want to handle that?
We are working on those kinds of connections, and community transit does take folks to the connector. the connector. And then the bus driver calls when it's coming back and they rendezvous. It does take some time, they have to wait. That was one of the reasons we're trying to get the east-west route.
Excuse me, I understand that you have to call a couple of days before. You can say, for instance, you want to get the connector, but you didn't call. Is there any way that you can get the connector without, because it's hard for us to travel a walk over to the, where the connector is?
Yes, ma'am, that's, we're working on that. Remember, the connector's only been in business now about six months, but we are working on trying to make it more accessible.
But the community bus is the one I'm concerned with, where they can pick up the people in the Vista-St. Lucie area?
Yes, ma'am.
To pick them up to go to the connector?
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Can we, so that we understand how many people here are in support of the issue that we're dealing with, can we, that is, the tax and the continuation of the buses, can we see a show of hands of all those people? Okay, I didn't want you to think we're ignoring you, but not each person has to stand up and give an opinion since we see a whole lot of hands out there, but we're certainly willing to stay here as long as you want to. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Hartens Dice, and I'm living in Port St. Lucie, 230 Voltaire Terrace. My only way of transportation is the community bus. And I'm begging, pleading, that each one that can help us to do what they can for us because we have no way getting around. Secondly, the drivers of the bus, they are very nice people, and they are short, they are short-staffed. I waited two hours and 10 minutes for to get a pickup. And I'm a diabetic, I have everything, I don't have to name them, God knows. So I'm asking each and every one who can help us to get around. I live alone, I have no family. My family is the community bus, so we're asking for help.
Thank you, ma'am. We had a lady over here.
I second that motion. Can you hear me? Yes, I see. My name is Goldie Comblum. I'm here three years in Florida, and I love this, I love the place, and it's wonderful. And the bus service is excellent. They're very helpful. They tie me down on the bus, and they make sure that I'm strapped well. They're careful and considerate, and we need you desperately. I have no other way, like all these people, have no other way of getting any place. We depend upon you, and we hope that in the future we'll be able to see you again. We're willing to pay an extra increase on that. I'm sure everybody wants to. I don't know why, there's no reason that we can't help a little. I mean, we're human, we have, our minds are here. It's that we just can't walk as well, and we need you desperately.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we get a comment on possibly making up for some of the shortfall by a small rate increase, Beth? Is that something that is regulated by federal law or local ordinance, or is that merely a budget issue?
It's a budget issue. We've said it, now, it is some Medicaid trip, it's a dollar copay. That's a different situation. The fare is set by us. We could set it higher. We'd have to have public hearings, and we'd have to have public hearings, actually, to change the route on the US-1 corridor, but that is something that could be explored, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Sounds like a good idea. Yes, ma'am.
If I can follow up with something Mrs. Rider just said. You said we have to have public hearings in order to change the route. Does that include the stops on US-1?
That is the stops on US-1. We could, that is the only one at this point.
I understand that, but did I hear you correctly that we have to have public hearings in order to make any changes to those, that route?
Yes.
Do we have available, just for the public's knowledge today, the map that shows where the fixed routes that we're looking at putting in for the east-west? Because I don't want people to assume that if we pass this tax today, that next month we're going to have routes all up and down, running east-west of US-1.
Yes.
That there is a fixed map that we had set to phase in.
It is there, and they're going to put it up, leaving in that little square spot there of Marcia, put it on the, by the lines, on the tabletop there, to the right of you. Okay, keep moving, I got a bunch of them. Those are the proposed routes. But none of these routes that have been proposed are set in stone because if it's determined, that's why we would have public hearings. If it was determined that there were other routes that needed to be done, or other sites to go, that needed to be serviced, then it can be changed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just briefly, this was, goes back to my original question about the existing service demand response that we have, and whether the MSTU would cover not only that shortfall, but also the implementation of this fixed route transit plan that the MPO developed. So I'm glad we have this map before us. This is the system that was being referred to in that five-year transit plan.
Well, this is in the 2025 plan, too.
The longer term?
Yeah.
But this would be the immediate?
The ones, the ones that we're proposing and attached to this map is the narrative, because it's really difficult to see on the map just where it is, is Alternative 8 and Alternative 10 would be the two routes to start, and you can see they're in the different colors there. One is in Port St. Lucie, and one is the Fort Pierce, and then down US-1.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can contend, may I continue? Mrs. Rider, on the US-1 stops, because it seems like there's a lot of people here today who have concerns on where those stops are located. I know that was through a grant with the state. Do we have the ability to ask them to put stops elsewhere, or are those the ones we need to have public hearings on?
Well, the connector route is a grant, and that grant was made directly to our transit provider, Community Transit. We don't have to ask the state for permission. We, the Community Transit can hold the public hearings, and then those additional stops can be put in place.
Okay.
Please, one more statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it possible for the bus drivers to get an increase?
Well, right now, we're trying to determine if we're even going to maintain the buses and the
Well, I'm sure you will, sir.
Their jobs, so.
I'm sure you will, but we'd appreciate that also, because they do an awful lot of help for us. I mean, they're excellent.
Well, everybody that's come forward has said how wonderful they are, so we appreciate those comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I sit on the board for the Council on Aging, and I see the Community Transit folks out there, so I'm sure due note will be taken of that comment.
Just remember, there's only so much money, though, and this is, mass transit is extremely expensive. We see another speaker coming forward.
Hi, my name is Philippa Smith-Waisen, and I live at 185 Southeast Manley Avenue in Port St. Lucie. And I'm here because it's not only the elderly people I'm talking about, over 55, that needs community transit. I am one of the younger disabled people that depend on it for everything, and if they stop it, I think that's the end of Philippa, and that would be the end of a whole lot of other people. Because as a disabled person so young, your income is not very much. And we need community transit. We also need better connection to the connector. Because sometimes, it's not all the time you remember that you need to do everything a day ahead. Like, I have an appointment this morning. I didn't remember to make the scheduling with the bus. I had to cancel it to get an MRI because I didn't remember why if I, there was a connecting bus, I could have connected and get to the appointment. So it's very important that we get a better service in the community. The drivers are excellent. They help you more than anything else. It's nothing that we could do and say about them, just that the service is a little slow, which is expected because it's, it's not enough, they, you know. But other than that, we have very good drivers. They need some more money. I would say they need some more money. I can't pay them too much more, but they need better salaries. Because Port St. Lucie, everything is going up, but nothing is being given to the employees and the people that works with the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Bob Sikowski, and I am the president of a group called Sightseekers. We're a group of blind people who basically need this system and need it badly. Governor Bush promised in his inaugural that he would not cut funding for transportation, and I urge him to make good on that promise. We need these, we need this system, we need the connector, we need anything we can get to help us get from point A to point B. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
May I ask you about that letter I gave you? I did request federal funding. Now, I believe Mr. Covens said there was something, or some funding that was going to the state. Is that true from the federal?
That's beyond my expertise. Beth?
I'm sorry, I didn't see the letter, so it's hard to
The federal funding, what kind of federal funding are we getting? Or is the state getting for transportation?
For transit?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're getting Section 9 funding. That hasn't been, hasn't been, the budget hasn't been set yet, but that's the one where we've lost the ability to use our funding for operating. And yes, we are getting, and Mr. Covens is very aware of our problem here. He actually was down here for the June meeting and did speak with our commissioners and the city fathers about this. And they've been very supportive, trying to find ways to help us.
Well, he did say he was going to try for more.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they can, if Congress can give 31 billion in pork, how about some of that pork coming to us?
Thank you, ma'am. Not to mention tax cuts for the rich. Yes, ma'am, come on up. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Palita Lee, and I represent New Horizons. We are very much support of community transit. 90% of our clients ride community transit, which they're there for mental health issues, some's abuse issues, which is a necessity and a need for this county. If we did not have community transit, they would have no transportation to us for our services. So I just wanted to let you know that we are in support of community transit, New Horizons. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We had another lady right over here. Come on up.
I'm Normal Lynn Seth, and I live at The Cove. And I just wanted to put in a word for the dispatchers. Nobody mentioned them. And they also are just great.
So we got to give them a raise, too?
Well, I don't, but they have to, they have to be counted because they really are wonderful.
Well, I hope they're watching this, or the word gets back how much you all love them, so we'll, we'll get the word to them. They're probably on the job right now.
My name is Shirley Burlingham, and I live out on North Beach. I think there are a lot more people in this county than the people who have spoken today that want to see public transportation. I drive my own car. I probably won't use public transportation for a while, but it is needed, and I'm involved in it in every way. I have been part of the committee that set up the fixed routes. I didn't agree with all of them, but I went along with it. We have to remember that there are youth in this county, too, that could ride those buses, and they need that. And I believe they gave a presentation on June 6th as to their feeling about public transportation. My family was all public transportation. My grandfather drove the street, Baltimore, the horse-drawn street trolleys in Boston and Worcester. My father took over after my grandfather, and for 40 years worked with the trolley cars and the buses. I have an uncle who worked for the Baltimore-Anapolis Railway. I have another one that worked for the Ohio Brass with the Bud Cars. I had another one that worked for this Norwich Public Works. If you go into England, you will see Meller Transportation on most every bus there. My maiden name was Meller. So transportation is a must. I think we all have to realize in this county, the MSTU is that that way we're going to have to go for many things. Funds are drying up, they're not there, and we need to remember that as all of these big projects go in, they are creating more cars on our roads. The roads are not going to increase. They're there, and they're either going to have to expand larger, whatever, but we need space for all of those cars. Public transportation is the only answer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else wish to talk about this issue?
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on Ms. Burlingham's comments, which I want to echo, is that I think we've heard an important segment of the community that we don't often get to hear from today, and I don't want to make light of that, but I do agree that there's a lot of other voices in the community as well, and the ones that I want to add, of course, are the youth in our community. As we sit here at 10:10 in the morning, they're all in school. So they're not here to be able to voice their feelings. In the past, we did have a special program set up to try and bring the youth into the transportation board and the process and give us their input. And what we heard from them is that not only do they support transit, but they also would like to see bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So again, if we're going to try and address this broader issue of public transportation, I think we need to be looking at the needs of the elderly, of the children, and basically providing a transportation service to all of the people in our community.
We have one more speaker.
My name is Diana Westlosky. I live in Fort Pierce, Florida. I think it's really a win-win situation for everybody, and, you know, it helps out in our comp plan by reducing the traffic flow on US-1 corridor in Fort Pierce. Definitely, the level of service is so bad, we have to try to do something with that. And the bike paths, you know, I definitely think that we need them, and I know that there's some concern. So if that probably is a big issue here, maybe we could help Ms. Rider out in some way in selling the whole, the total package. So maybe Commissioner Coward might help Ms. Rider out with that PR problem, if she has it, with the other communities. But, you know, we need it, and I agree with him. I think it's a safety issue with the bike paths. And the other point is, you know, I'll probably be riding the bus in about 30, 35 years. So, you know, it is an investment in our future, and we have to start somewhere. And I agree with you also, Mr. Barnes, that, you know, we don't have money for everything, but sometimes you have to kind of bite the bullet and go ahead and look for the future and fund it, and, you know. I mean, we have a population that is getting older, and we are going to need this service. And I talked to a lot of older women especially, and they're concerned, what am I going to do when I can't drive anymore? And I say, oh, well, we have community transit. And they go, we do? And I go, oh, yeah. They go, oh, that's such a load off my mind. You mean, I can take a bus to where I need to go? And I go, yeah. So it's, it's not just an economic issue, sometimes it's a little bit of a moral issue. And we need to be able to give peace of mind to the people in the community. So, thank you, and I hope you vote for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else before we close the public hearing and get back to the board for some action or debate? We got one more speaker. Yes, ma'am, but you need to come forward because we can't, can't pick you up from way back there. Okay, the speaker asked why we pick on transportation. Come on forward, ma'am, keep coming. I think our problem is created by the federal government cutting off funding, and so what our issue is today is whether to make up that shortfall with the tax on local citizens for our
for our local transit problems, but you're certainly...
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Vioris Lovita Dunston from Port St. Lucie, Florida, and I am one who strongly support the community transit. Because of my illness, I'm unable to drive for the past two years, and if it hadn't been for the community transit, I don't know what I would have do, or I would leave my house, or I would go to the store, I would do anything. And I strongly support it. And I'm asking, if it is, if you even want to raise the fear, I think myself and others, we are willing to take that. So please, don't take our transit away from us.[648.66][648.66](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, you can come forward.
I'm Frances Friedman. I live at 756 Southwest Ravenswood Lane, Port St. Lucie. There are so many different ways that you can try to get money, but do you think that these people can get away without the transportation? Do you know what would happen here? I'm living here 31 years, Port St. Lucie. For years, I had my husband who drove me, I drove, I don't drive anymore. The thing is, without transportation, I believe a lot of people here that own their own homes and all wouldn't stay here. I know that I would get up and leave. I have my own home. Without the transportation, what good is Port St. Lucie? Why even discuss it? I was shocked when I heard about this. Why? Are there other ways that you can get money? This is, here, look at these people, we're all old timers. That's the lowest of the line that you can go to. What about the upper bunch of people? What about them, where you can ask for money and probably get it? A lot of people in big business, everything's going fine with them. Why us? That's all I have to say, because I don't understand this, this whole thing.[735.79][735.79](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ma'am, good point.
My name is Debbie Hollingsworth, and I live in High Point. And I'd like to back up some of the things that people have said. I'm past 80 years old, and I probably, like a lot of people my age, shouldn't be driving, but you keep trying because you have to get where you want to go. And in High Point, I can see, when I'm walking out, I can see the connector buses go by, but they don't do any good because I can't get way up to the Sable Palm or down to Midway Road. So I would certainly like to emphasize that these buses have to be kept and that we really need more stops. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I thought to you about this earlier, Beth, I think we, several people, we had thought about this at a public hearing, that these retirement communities, if you want increased ridership, you have to go into the community and pick folks up. You can't expect them in the summer or in the winter to make their way out to US-1 and stand by the traffic whizzing by and take the bus. So I think we're well aware of that problem. Anybody else wish to come forward before we, as long as we talk about it, we're not going to take any action. So we're willing to sit here all day and listen, but we're not making any decisions while we're listening. Yes, ma'am, come forward.
I'm Betty RV. I live in Port St. Lucie for the last 20-some years, and I noticed with all the rhetoric that they mention the federal government, the federal government. Well, we, the people, are the federal government. Why are we being pushed around at the end of our line? We're 80 years old and more and can't drive, sick and all, paid our dues for the country. I think the politicians should make the federal government stand up for us, one way or the other. Never mind all the rhetoric and the Section BEDs or whatever. That's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am, we need to take that to the voting booth. That's the choice we have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I think she brings up another good point, and that's the importance of having your voice heard at the Transportation Board, which is known as the Metropolitan Planning Organization. They meet on a monthly basis and typically have one or two people in the audience, and that's a board made up of elected folks from all over the county. And I think if you really wanted to have strong support for transit, is to have your voice heard on a consistent basis and be a part of that process.
Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and come back to the board for debate, discussion, ideas, possibly a vote.
Mr. Chairman, as the one advocating for a modification of this proposal to include provisions for bicycle sidewalk and pedestrian facilities, I want to just briefly touch on, I mentioned the reasons why I want to see that happen, but I want to just mention a couple of related issues. First of all, that modification does not in any way take away one penny from the transit proposal. It doesn't reduce or jeopardize the service that would be provided through that program. It also does not increase the maximum rate. The original rate was to fluctuate between various millage rates maxing out at 25, and this essentially would keep it at a constant rate and bring in additional dollars within that cap for bicycle and pedestrian facilities, but it does not increase the maximum rate. And I think the important point here is, again, the transportation equity, serving all of the needs in our community and also the public safety. So I would hope that we don't look shortsightedly only at the transit need. I think we need to look broader at this, and I agree with Ms. Westlosky's comments about challenging ourselves to work together to advocate for what's right, as opposed to a self-defeating attitude of it can't be done. I think we need to work together, the city and the county, and the chamber, and the citizens, to do what's right for this community. So I would hope that we can include an all-inclusive package and do what's right for this community.
Commissioner Coward, you got my vote. Why don't we, I appreciate you putting this item in and advocating for it, and I'm certainly convinced of the need for bike and pedestrian paths. As I noted earlier, when the citizens of Port St. Lucie were asked what their number-one priorities were, that was right up near the top, if not at the top. And just what I hear out on the street and in the community is that people demand bike and pedestrian ways, and when they're there, they use them. And we've seen that over and over again. So I certainly want to see that as part of this. We just have to discuss up here how we feel about that as a whole. Mr. Chair?
I would prefer the tax just pertain to transit. I think that it dilutes it. I think that, I would rather dedicate impact fees for, maybe dedicate a certain part of the new impact fees that we may increase to bike paths. I think the general public or the citizens are already paying for bike paths and the added alarm taxes and other areas. And I would rather see all of this MSTU go to more stops so they can go into more neighborhoods and maybe bring the east-west corridor a little bit quicker to the people. It's evident out here, these people need to get to the bus, and I think that we ought to put the whole, the whole amount towards that. I don't think we should have two subjects or two different things funded out of one transit system.
Okay, how's everybody else feel? I would note, though, in there that the, just in response to that, the transit, their needs are lesser in the short term and greater in the long term, and so what this does evidently, when it's collected, is takes the surplus, sends it to the bike path pedestrian ways, which we're in desperate need of as well, and then that tapers off as the demands for the transit system increase. So I don't think it's one or the other if Commissioner Coward's idea passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on what Commissioner Brune's saying, his comment. My feel is if we need the stops and the routes now, I would just as soon let that extra money go ahead and start putting those different things into implementation. I feel that the cities need to be coming on board on this. They've got the ability to tap into their CRAs to put in some of the sidewalks and bike paths, which are used in their area. Just this weekend, it was in the paper concerning that the school district has had the ability to use some of their transportation rebate funds to put in sidewalks and had not done so. So my concern is that we're putting all of this entirely on the county's shoulders. And even though, yes, the cities have to agree to an interlocal, I don't yet see where they've come to the table on this. So I would follow with Commissioner Brune's idea. If I'm going to pass this, then it all needs to go strictly to the transit and get that up and running instead of having to phase it out as long as yet.
Mr. McIntyre, does this require a supermajority, or three to two will do it?
Three to two will do it.
Okay. Commissioner Lewis, how do you feel about this?
Well, first of all, I have a question. I think Commissioner Coward asked the question, but I wasn't real clear. When this was brought forward originally, we were talking about the feeder routes only, and the shortfall in operating funds came after the fact. Is the funding as put forward here going to cover the shortfall as well as provide feeder routes? Or was that, is that the intention?
Yes.
And also, you mentioned matches. The fact that this is a future revenue source, can we use that as a match for something we're applying for this month?
Yes.
Okay, well, those are good things.
Because by the time we'd receive it, it would be in place, hopefully. If it wasn't, then we wouldn't, couldn't accept it.
Well, there will be, obviously, with any kind of tax, there is a period of time before it can be implemented, and I wasn't clear how that would work with the match.
No, we'd fine with that.
Okay. And I'd just like to make a comment. I think there is probably a misconception as to the service population. I am always amazed, I don't have the figures because I wasn't expecting this to be a presentation for community transit. I don't know if the community transit folks, and I'm not going to put them on the spot if they have it, they can wave at me, but I know that I am always amazed, year to year, when I see how many folks under 55 are using the service anymore. I think quite, actually, if I've not forgotten, I believe there are actually more younger folks than older folks riding the buses at this point in time. So we haven't forgotten the younger population, and we are serving them with this. There are a lot of folks that are taking it to get to work these days, and the implementation of the feeder routes, which is one of the suggestions one of the ladies made, is very important to keep it, keep it going and get it even more widely used, obviously. I, too, do have a concern, as much as I agree with Commissioner Coward that it is a safety issue. I mean, I've got children that ride, fortunately, they don't have to ride to school, but I do have children that ride bicycles. I see a lot of people walking in my neighborhood, and they're walking on the street, and we need to get them on bike paths and sidewalks, but I am really concerned about diluting the impact of this particular funding source. So while, I've got to say, it's not a deal breaker for me, I really would prefer to see it reworked to a transit funding source only.
Well, let me just, I'm trying to understand, I'm not understanding whether the three that are, have negative viewpoints about Commissioner Coward's idea are in favor of giving the transit without any bike paths and pedestrian more money than they have planned, more money than they've said they need by imposing the full millage of .25 immediately, or whether you're talking about starting off with the budget that they've said they needed and then phasing it into .25 and leaving bike and pedestrian paths unfunded? That's, I guess, my question. But Beth, you had a question or a comment?
That millage you all would set in July when you do the millage. So that's, that's a decision that you can do down the road. At this point, we just need to get the, and incorporated in the resolution is a cap of .25.
Oh, I know, but I think this is something we need to decide right now, because I heard Commissioner Brune say he wanted to impose the entire cap, .25, which would give you, it looks like, $1.5 million more than you budgeted or asked for. And that was the money that Commissioner Coward had said might improve the safety around our schools and other areas for bike and pedestrian ways. So, I mean, before we vote on it, I think we ought to have an idea of, are we, and you can now vote me, but I think we ought to have an idea of what we're going to do with the money rather than just imposing the tax, so.
Well, what we're proposing at this point is about the .9 mil, .09 mil.
Well, I know that, but I heard, it sounded like the preparation for a motion for .25, and it all goes to you whether you want it or not. And so what I'm, what Commissioner Coward had said is, rather than start out and by giving you just what you need, why not impose the maximum millage and give the bike and pedestrian ways the surplus over the first few years until you need the entire millage? And Commissioner Coward, I'm, I guess I'm arguing your issue here, and I'm going to let you do that.
Two of the three speakers mentioned they're against the idea because it dilutes transit, but I think the point of my proposal was to fully implement the transit plan that came forward by the MPO that has no negative effect whatsoever on the transit plan. It fully implements it. Instead of fluctuating that rate, it allows for the surplus dollars in the initial years to go towards additional needs of public bicycle and pedestrian facilities, but in no way does it take away from the transit plan that came from the Transportation Board. So I just don't think it's accurate to say that it dilutes the transit unless, as you're asking, there's some plan now to put more money than the transit plan asked for, and if so, what is that plan?
Can we, can we have Table 63A put on the screen so that we're all talking about the same thing here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a comment, kind of respond to that? When I said it diluted the plan, I wasn't implying that funding was being taken away. I'm simply saying that the intent becomes a little bit less clear. The impact of asking for the community to step forward with their tax dollars, I mean, the folks here, I'm not sure there was a misconception here. We're not talking about shutting down the transit system, we're talking about taxing people to increase the transit system. That's what the issue is today. And I was not implying in any way that I thought the money was not going to be there for transit. I was indicating that I thought it would be a perception issue, that there would be less clearness with what we're asking for.
Right. And if I can just respond on that, I think we're diluting the benefits of the program by only focusing on the transit. I often use my wife as a gauge of what's right and wrong, and I asked her on this particular case what her thoughts were, and she said, I wouldn't use the transit, but I sure would like bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So if we move forward with a broader concept, we're actually selling it to more people as opposed to less, because quite honestly, the minority of the folks in this community are going to use transit. But yet, it's still a need that has to be taken care of. We can't just forget about our elderly and handicapped and others who need this service. But we can't forget about our kids and others as well who would like to use bicycle and pedestrian facilities.
Well, a lot of the stops that folks came up here and talked about getting to require sidewalks that they don't have, so they're not going to get to the stops anyway. Doug Anderson, what dedicated funding source do we have to improve our sidewalks, pedestrian ways around schools and in our neighborhoods? Isn't it, what are we doing, like 200,000 out of one source, and that's about it, isn't it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we do not have a lot of sources for sidewalks and pedestrian paths. As you recall, I have some examples. Out on the islands, we had to do them in phases. Lakewood Park, we're doing them in phases.
Well, and we're taking road impact fee money, not any funding that's specifically set aside for pedestrian ways and bike paths. In some areas of the county, there are no funds in the road impact account, so we can't do them.
That's correct. And I looked in the backup that Ms. Ryder supplied us with and provided us with, and it showed that, I think, for one mile of sidewalks, to build a sidewalk, this is before the design, engineering, what have you, is about $188,000 a mile to build a sidewalk. So they're very costly.
Well, they're very costly, but they require almost no maintenance and operations. And once you build them, they, for free, basically, provide unlimited access 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, with no added cost. People don't have to pay a quarter or a dollar to walk on a sidewalk, they don't have to call the sidewalk to find out if they can walk on it. It's the most efficient means of transportation there is. So I'm, I don't know why we would leave that out of this equation when we're really doing not enough as it is for bike paths and pedestrian ways. We got this up, but it's blurry. Is there any way to make it better?
It's too, it's too small, the table.
Well, anyway. All the Commissioners have this chart. I'm still trying to get an idea, though, of trying to raise up three votes to, as you're saying, Beth, all we need to do is to pass the tax, we need three votes, and then this board later would set the millage for the tax and the budget?
Yes, at budget time.
And budget time is when?
Well, July, August.
Okay. So I guess Commissioner Coward, the vote today would be to impose the tax or not to impose it, and then later we'd decide on where the funding went and if it went to bike paths and pedestrian ways, or would the vote today on the, on the MSTU, would it leave out the bike path and pedestrian way if, I think Commissioner Coward and I would very much like to continue to lobby the other jurisdictions and our fellow Commissioners in public hearings to agree with his recommendation.
Can we clarify that last statement that was made about the approval that's being asked of, asked of us today? Because I thought the resolution... Because I thought the resolution, which is spelled out, actually gives an indication of how the money would be spent as opposed to an open-ended approval to be determined at a later date. Because quite honestly, this is almost deja vu for me, because I advocated for similar efforts to promote transit, public, you know, transportation, bicycle and pedestrian facilities when we debated the gas tax issue. I could not get the support of this board to dedicate one penny of our gas tax to go for this. I was finally left with no other option but to leave language in there that said, "We could use it for that, but we wouldn't necessarily dedicate it for that." Then when we moved forward, that gas tax dollars was all used for roadways, and still is to this day. Not one penny of our gas tax dollars is going for anything other than roads. So this needs to be approved, I think, with a specific purpose, so that we don't, once again, shortchange our efforts to provide bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the community.
Okay. So, Mr. McIntyre, would you clarify as to what a yes vote would mean today and what it would exclude during budget hearings?
Commissioner, as drafted, a yes vote on the resolution would create the unit, it would authorize a tax of not to exceed .25 mils within the unit, which presumably would include unincorporated and incorporated if the cities consented. That money that could then be used to fund public transit and non-motorized transportation, which would include sidewalks and bike paths. The board, the action today creates the unit, establishes the power to levy up to .25 mils, then the board, we will then contact the cities, attempt to gain their consent to the ordinance, by ordinance, to the inclusion of the cities within the unit. And then, assuming that the cities do that, the board then, starting in July at your budget work sessions, would determine the millage to be levied and would determine a budget where those funds would be used.
And during that time, we could certainly start, and you certainly will start planning how the money would, how much would be taxed and how it would be used?
Yes, sir. Presumably, the county administrator and the budget manager will present a program that would give you perhaps multiple scenarios on how to use the money with the .25 mils and different programs. And some of that money, again, we'll probably need to do an interlocal agreement with the cities. They will be getting money presumably for their bike paths and sidewalks. The county will be getting some money for unincorporated area bike paths and sidewalks. So that money will be going back to the cities through an interlocal agreement.
Mr. Chairman, if I understand that, then we can pass this resolution today and basically be allowed for the opportunity to move forward with some additional lobbying efforts with the cities, which I would actually encourage, because I'm not, I guess I'm not pessimistic about that, I'm optimistic. Because I think if you go and talk with our elected officials at the municipal level, you'll hear from them that they do in fact support public transportation beyond just transit. I think they do support sidewalks and bicycle and pedestrian facilities. So if this does move forward, I would hope that the board would at least be open-minded, that if they do in fact support that, that then we embrace and move forward. Because I don't think this dilutes it, I think it strengthens it, I truly do. And if we can move forward in that fashion with some, you know, support from the board to be open-minded to the needs of what we hear from the cities, and I too, if they come back and say, "No, we don't want this for bicycle and pedestrian facilities," I too will amend my position. But I like to at least leave that option open so that we can move forward the cities and try and meet those needs as well.
Okay. At an earlier meeting, we'd asked staff to look at possible category in our impact fees to buy capital. I know you can't use operations and maintenance, but as more people move here, they demand more of these transit capital expenses, like buses, shelters, stops, transfer stations, that type of thing. And we've also talked about fare increases as a possible budgetary item to reduce, because what we're talking about here today is putting the entire burden on the property tax owner. And I very much would like to see the burden shifted to the riders themselves and to the people that are building new houses in the community that one day will need these facilities if they don't need them currently. So where does the impact fee item stand? Is that one of the items that Mr. Murphy was having the consultant look at, or is that a future item?
Yeah, Mr. Murphy is working on that with the consultant, and unfortunately, he's not here today to give you an update, but I know that I raised that point with him about two weeks ago.
Okay.
They are working on it, they'll come back with a report.
So, anyway, Commissioner Brune, you had, you know, we had ideas of how we were going to spend the money, but it sounds like we can hold that off and up for another day and during our budget hearings. We'll probably debate that quite a bit during budget hearings. Commissioner Hutchinson?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask that prior to going into those discussions at budget time, before we set an actual millage, because I'm a little bit more comfortable, so long as I know we're not setting a millage today, and that we're going to get the input from the cities, and the input from whether or not, from a budget standpoint, the ability to raise the rates as was suggested today, if that can be filtered in prior to our discussions, if you can get a spreadsheet on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Along with this, asking the cities as we go forward to ask their opinion on this, whether or not they would implement their CRAs to cover some of the costs of the sidewalks and bike paths within their areas, if that's also an option versus including it in our transit?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of complete the cycle here. It does say within the resolution, on page three, well, actually, two to three, it says that the board shall determine each year the estimated cost of providing public transit services, et cetera, et cetera, and subsequent amendments to such plans. So I think the increases that we were perhaps looking at to speed things up, if it can be determined what public transit would require to do that sort of thing, what the community transit, rather, would require, could also be accomplished under this. And then it states, "The remainder of the funds levied shall be expended on non-motorized transportation facilities." I think that gives us a lot of leeway to determine exactly what portion of the funds would go to each, and I think it would satisfy kind of both sides in this equation. So I think, knowing that we're not strictly determining funding today, I can support this as well.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Just one last comment. I think we've talked about the cities, but let's keep the school board in mind, too. This board has just received a letter from Westwood. There's been accidents outside, immediately outside of their facility, major accidents. They've requested funding from this board to make improvements to sidewalk and pedestrian facilities, which we don't currently have. So this is the type of program. If we included this into that type of effort, so I think the school board should be included as well.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, on that subject, Commissioner Coward, I had gone to Mr. Anderson yesterday after finding out that the school board has possibly monies available for that sidewalk, if they could at least partnership. Can I ask him to give us an update on that conversation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson. I did call Dr. Vogel yesterday morning after I read the article, and I had a discussion with him regarding the Westwood sidewalks. We're trying to get a better determination of what the cost will be, and then I'm to call him back. But he would look into the possibility of providing some type of matching funding.
Thank you.
But we don't have any account to take it out of ourselves, and we're being reactive instead of proactive. We wait until people get hurt or die before we decide there's a problem. So I think Commissioner Coward's point that we have some dedicated funding and then plan ahead is a good one. So hopefully, we can get a motion here and move on with this item. Move, Paul.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Might as have it unanimously. We'll now move to the...
Thank you, Commissioner. Could I just interject real quickly? An elderly lady who just went out, didn't realize she had sort of done this during the public hearing, asked me to read, "We, the members of the blind support group, the sightseers, respectfully request that you continue the bus service, community transit. Any elderly and disabled says and need this service sincerely," and it's signed by Evelyn Shelley and about 10 or 12 other sightseers. And I will give it to Millie for the reading.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Okay. County Attorney Ordinance Number 03-12, Fifth Cent Tourist Development Tax. We've had quite a bit of debate on this issue already, but reintroduce it, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attached to my memorandum is a copy of Ordinance 03-12, which if adopted, would implement the Fifth Cent Tourist Development Tax as provided under Florida law. As proposed, 67% of the Fifth Cent revenue would be used to pay debt service on bonds issued to finance the construction, reconstruction, or renovation of the St. Lucie County sports complexes. The remaining 33% of this Fifth Cent revenue would be allocated for capital facilities that promote tourism located in the St. Lucie County Fairgrounds area as well as north of Midway Road. One capital project that would be funded if the Fifth Cent tax is implemented is a covered equestrian arena at the St. Lucie County Fairgrounds. Permission to advertise was granted on January 7th. Notice was published in the Tribune on January the 15th. Staff recommends that the board adopt Ordinance Number 03-12 as drafted. Mr. Chairman, procedurally, we talked a little bit about supermajority vote on the last item. It did not require it. This item does require a supermajority vote by state law. We have, I'll point to the board's attention on pages four and five. The allocation is set out in some detail, again, at 67% goes to debt service on the sports complex, 33% goes to facilities, capital facilities that promote tourism located in the fairgrounds in the area north of Midway Road. We've added some language in there that requires a supermajority vote to actually change this particular allocation, given the fact that it had to be approved by a supermajority vote at the outset. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions or comments of the board before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Again, I hate to repeat myself, but as the Chair of the TDC, I want to try and be a conduit of information back to this board from both members of the Tourist Development Council as well as the Hotel Motel Association. I think you've seen correspondence from the Hotel Motel Association recently, supporting the Fifth Cent with provisions for additional dollars going towards promotion and advertising. And of course, it's the same sentiment I'm hearing directly from the TDC. I think we also need to have other issues on our agenda here, and that's making sure we've got adequate staff to continue to expand and improve our tourist efforts. I also would like to make sure we've got seed funds available for us to do a variety of things. We've seen that work with the Sports Coalition, where they've used seed money to bring in various tournaments and so forth. I also have seen worthy entities come forward seeking some limited grant dollars from the Tourist Development Council and have been rejected, which I felt were worthy. So there's, I think, some need for some additional seed funds to help promote tourist activities within our community. And while I generally support what's laid out in front of us, I just, ideally, I'd like to see some more flexibility there. This specific plan has not been brought back to the TDC to be scrutinized. We ought to be leaving a little bit of flexibility in there so that we can meet the needs of our growing community in the next decade or so with input from the TDC to help us shape that. But I feel almost as if we're locking in every penny, including $890,000 for North County Tourism to be determined at a later date. Most of that, I think, is a great idea, but I still think there ought to be some flexibility in here for us to adapt and amend this, you know, as the need arises in the future. So I throw that out just for discussion purposes.
Personally, I mean, I kind of have a different viewpoint. I think money spent on mailers and newspaper ads and magazine ads in faraway cities and counties are the least effective means of creating tourism. I think the most effective means are creating community and attractions in the community that people will not only want to visit, but they'll tell their neighbors when they go back home. And I think word of mouth is the most effective advertising generally, and with regard to tourism, it's way more effective than, I don't, I can't imagine, I don't know any people that respond to blind ads and newspaper and magazine ads and say, "I'm going to go spend $5,000 in that community on a family vacation." I think people hear word of mouth, they ask their neighbors, their friends, "Where have you been that you enjoyed?" And I think that's how people make decisions on their discretionary vacation dollars. So I just have a different opinion. I respect your opinion, but I think what our first order of business ought to be is to, as I said, create attractions in this community that not only our citizens can enjoy, but our tourists, and that'll have them coming back for more. We...
Can I briefly respond? Because I actually, in large part, agree with your sentiment. In fact, you'd said something to me a decade ago that I still remember today, and you described this community as unpolished silver. And I've always thought that that was a very adequate description of St. Lucie County. So when you talk about the community attractions and the investment we need to make in those, I see that as the effort to polish the silver, and I absolutely agree with you. But I think that, once we've polished the silver, we then have to have the wherewithal to actually market ourselves to promote tourism. And that's where we need a balance, I think, of both the capital investment as well as the promotion and advertising. And I think this is weighted largely towards the capital improvements, and needs to have a little bit of flexibility to deal with some of the promotion and advertising as well.
The, you had asked at an earlier meeting for a printout of the increase in tourist dollars they would get from some of these facilities that we're talking about spending real dollars on. And I think we got that, and I think that would, it looks to me like, over 15 years, $1.5 million additionally would be generated. Is that correct, Doug Anderson?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it's over $1.6 million. Within the third year, based upon the projections of Dreams Park South, then the equestrian facility, using some numbers we got out of Perry, Georgia, and only running those at 65% of what they do up there, it shows that the One Cent would generate an additional excess of $100,000 per year that would go directly to the TDC.
So I'm hoping that they'll, that will be used for increased advertising, and if needed, for staff to do the advertising.
Right. And I agree, that's a good start. But when you break that down on a yearly basis, cumulatively, it sounds like a lot of money. And it is a lot of money. But if you look at it on an annual basis, we're talking about $50,000 to $60,000. And when you start talking about staff and other needs, it does not leave you with a lot of increased funds available for promotion and advertising. Whereas, what is the total amount of money that we're putting into capital improvements?
Well, first of all, excuse me, Mr. Chair Commissioner Coward, it's in excess of $100,000 a year. The Dreams Park would be generating a little over $61,000 based upon their numbers, and the equestrian facility would be generating over $50,000.
Right. Two things. First of all, that's based on a 15th, the 15th year, I'm looking at the first year, it's actually $61,000. So it depends on which year you're selecting.
As I said, the third year, by the third year, it looks like it'll be around $100,000.
And that's if your projections...
That, well, they're not my projections.
Right. At this point, have we heard back from Dreams Park South?
Dreams Park South, I know Commissioner Barnes can give you an update. I spoke to Don Cooper last week, the city manager of Port St. Lucie. He had a meeting with Coulter. They are moving ahead, there's a few things that they have to address. And I know Commissioner Barnes, you were involved in a meeting.
Right.
I guess I'm just saying, these are estimates, these, you know, we don't know for sure, but things may need some modification in the future, and I feel like we're being, we're micromanaging this to the point that there's not enough flexibility for us to work in the future with our TDC, which will bring back recommendations to the board, which will make final decisions. Largely, I'm in agreement with what's before us. I just think there needs to be a little more flexibility there.
Well, I have, make one more attempt, not necessarily convince you, but just to make a point. The projections are that almost $1.6 million would be generated for them to use as they please, the TDC. There's only about half of that that would be generated over that same period of time for the facility in the north end of the county, which all these years, the North County has built and sustained Met Stadium. The Dreams Park South will take further money into the south part of the county, and I think that it's necessary that a tiny amount, and that is what it is, a tiny amount, $893,000 over some 15 years, ought to be reserved for seed money for a facility in the North County that we deem appropriate as putting heads on beds for tourism. So I don't think we tie the hands at all. I think that's a very small amount, and it's about half of what the TDC gets in extra revenue if all these projections are accurate.
And just briefly, the Dreams Park South is just south of the, or it's in the northern extent of Port St. Lucie, and it's going to supposedly bring in 70,000 room nights. It's not a Port St. Lucie project, it's a project in the northern limits of the city that are going to benefit the entire community. So I'm not as in touch with this drawing lines, north gets this, south gets that. It's going to benefit the whole community, and I just think there needs to be more flexibility.
Okay. We've had a spirited debate. Anybody else want to wade in before we open the public hearing? Anybody else want to wade in before we open the public hearing? Sign 01, we'll open the public hearing for discussion of the fifth cent tourist tax.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here today to tell you that I am in favor of the tax, and I am especially in favor of some of the funds that are going to the Equestrian Park. And at this time, I have a report, and I'd like to submit it and pass it out.
Yes, ma'am.
This report is called the Thalheimer Report, and it was commissioned by Palm Beach County to see the economic impact that the equestrian industry had on Palm Beach County. And that is briefly, I think I highlighted all of them on page one. I'm just going to try to make this brief because we've been here for a while. On page two, you can see the dollar figures. Now, this report was completed in 1993. We're looking at some substantial dollars. $229 million came into Palm Beach County through the equine industry. And they broke it down, and I highlighted those for you. $153 million was spent indirectly and directly by horse owners. And that breaks down further to $51 million by indirectly and directly by non-resident horse owners. And $23 million indirectly and directly by people just visiting. So I think that you should take the Equestrian Park as a serious part of the community, and that it's not just a weekend thing, that it's an industry, a very large industry. And if you look on page three, it also shows you that it created 4,355 jobs in Palm Beach County. Now, this is just a summary of the report. Most of these equestrian events took place in Wellington. And some of it is polo, and he, the person who did the report, breaks it down for you. So even if you remove polo, which we're not talking about, and you saw 66 percent of these dollars comes from horse show events. Now, if I sat here and I was a Walmart or some other industry, and I said, you know, I could maybe bring 2,000 jobs, and I could bring in somewhere around $100 million annually to your community in direct and indirect spending, I think maybe I might get your attention. So the park isn't just something frivolous. And I think that this report backs up what I'm saying because it was done in '93, and these numbers, basically, they feel have doubled. So having an equestrian community or having the park to where people can come and show, they just, they stay in our hotels, they're going to go to our restaurants, they're going to go to our feed stores, I mean, it just kind of is endless. So it's a really good thing. And perhaps, I don't know if we have an economic development coordinator, you know, we could look at expanding this and consider it, I think it's a good marriage, the equestrian industry and St. Lucie County. We have a rural community, we have an agricultural community, you know, it's a low-impact industry. But it's not just a mom-and-pop thing anymore. And I think that this report and the figures in it, you know, should maybe catch your eye, and maybe you should look at it and, you know, maybe take a chance and look at the full report. Because I think that if we have the park, we can have horse shows constantly, we can expand it. So those are my ideas, and I just hope that you vote for the tax and that we, even though we're going to talk about flexibility, that you go ahead and that you fund the equestrian part out at the fair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Anderson, while we're waiting on another speaker, can you tell us a little bit about this tax? Who pays this tax? I don't think we talked about that when we first started.
Mr. Chair, thank you. A couple of comments. First of all, it would be an additional one penny on the bed tax. So if someone were to pay a $70 a night room rate, this would be an additional 70 cents on their bill. The equestrian facility itself, we're building it in mind to follow up with what the speaker had said. We're building it in mind that it will be expanded in the future, based upon all the information that we've been gathering from around the state and in Georgia. It should be very successful, and when we do construct it, it will have expansion potential. We'll build that into it.
Okay. Mr. Ribbit, you ready?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Al Ribbit, St. Lucie County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for the opportunity to share our opinion concerning a couple of items. Just one I'll reference as part of the document we'd like to submit for the record, and that's the naming rights of the stadium. We want to take the opportunity to commend this Board and county staff, particularly Mr. Anderson, for the excellent work in securing a 15-year additional commitment from the Mets. We're very proud and pleased to have them in our community and glad to have their economic impact. With regard to the fifth cent, the Chamber supports the addition of the fifth cent. We want to take the opportunity to point out a topic that Mr. Coward just briefly discussed, or you all, I guess, a little more than briefly discussed. And that is, we believe, a disparity in what's being spent for promotion of our community. We did take information, it was provided to us from the St. Lucie County Hotel Motel Association. They received it from the Florida Hotel Motel Association about what was spent in 2001 for advertising and promotion. That specific document, so you can see where we came up with those numbers, is attached for review. There is a document that summarizes that, and based on the 24 that were provided in that report, they're spending, on average, 48 percent of their resort tax dollars for promotion. And it evolves to about $545,000. And again, this is in 2001 dollars and not today's dollars. As we understand it, the proposal as presented to you today would increase the amount of the resort tax for non-marketing expenditures and would still allow the TDC the one cent, which is $450,000 approximately, of which $20,000 goes for the maintenance or operation of the Marine Echo Center. And then also money's out of that for staff, to staff that program. So you look at comparing apples to apples, how much money is available for promotion and advertising. It's somewhere $200,000 in rough numbers less than what the average on the state was spending back in 2001. We're not opposed to you moving forward on the fifth cent. We support actually you doing that. We would suggest to you to attempt to try to find additional dollars that could be spent for marketing. We understand the importance of having quality facilities and the value that brings to our community. We also think very strongly that we need to promote those facilities and that we do need additional resources to do that. And briefly, just to sum up, we would like for you to direct the Tourist Development Council to come up with a five-year marketing plan, and the purpose of that is to determine exactly how much we might need to effectively and assertively market St. Lucie County, and that, as they've done that, then that you all make a commitment to move forward in securing additional funds. Mr. Coward's suggestion of adding flexible language to this may serve as a vehicle for you to provide additional funds for marketing in the future. We're not saying that that's appropriate at this time, but we would like for you to look at additional funding for tourist development, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just certainly appreciate marketing, although I don't put a lot of credence in it. But just keep in mind, every dollar that we spend on newspaper and magazines ad is a dollar we can't spend on things like equestrian facilities that is proven to bring people here. It's not a stab in the dark trying to lure people here. So I certainly understand the desire for that, but I, again, will have to come down on the side of building quality facilities for people. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, if I could, it's a side issue, but it's an important one. The Smithsonian facility, fabulous facility, but I have had problems with how we've paid for that in the past. Here, if this proposal goes forward, there's $890,000 of funds for the North County. I agree, we need to continue to support the entire county. Why don't we take the Smithsonian Marine Center funds that are coming out of the current TDC dollars and have it paid for out of that North County fund? That frees up 20,000 a year, times 15 years, provides another $300,000 to the TDC to do promotion and advertising, and still meets the guidelines that has been laid out in this proposal. It'd be a good starting point.
Well, I mean, I think we could certainly talk about that at budget time. I don't think today is the time to set the budget for the tourist development. But, I mean, I understand your point. Yes, ma'am, you had a comment?
Yes, I'm Rita Stike Leather. I'm a native of Fort Pierce, and I'm a business owner in this county, too. And I support the fifth cent tax, which kind of, it's funny, come from a CPA because we're usually not promoting tax. But I do, in this instance, I think the Equestrian Center would be fabulous for this county. I personally don't have children that show horses or anything, but I did that as a child, and I feel like it's a good, responsible, competitive thing for children to learn. And I happened to be at a business this morning, and one of the business owners said that her two children, her two sons, are starting into the horseback, you know, she just happened to be telling me, it was kind of funny that I'd be here today to listen to this. We are an agricultural community, so I think it kind of goes hand in hand. Besides what Diana spoke about with the horse shows, you know, we probably wouldn't have the polo, but then there's other horse-type events that are very popular for this area, which could be rodeos or, you know, that's taken on a whole new limelight in the sports arena, too. So we have local 4-H groups that could benefit from it, FFA and other high school agricultural stuff. And I also have knowledge of some people that have land over 120 acres and stuff like that, that they would consider developing an equestrian residential community if this was to go into, too. So I think that could, you know, build, you know, an equestrian community, which we really don't have anything here. And I think a lot of people in the south would move up for that reason, too. I think it could expand a lot of residential communities, too, if we had an equestrian center to go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Donna Porter, and I am the Executive Director at Heathcote Botanical Gardens. And I'm here today in support of the tax and also to plant the seed for the county's support for Heathcote Botanical Gardens. Gardening is the number-one hobby in America, and people seek out places like botanical gardens on vacations and as destinations. We not only are a huge, major tourist attraction to St. Lucie County, but we also benefit this county in so many other ways: educationally, recreationally, environmentally, scientifically, therapeutically. We have, we have the potential to serve St. Lucie County, like I said, in so many different ways. I've been on board as Executive Director for eight months now, and one of my priorities is to develop a master plan, to have a professionally-produced master plan done for the garden. And with a master plan, we'll be able to show what kind of potential this garden has and how it can better serve the people in this community and the visitors to this community as well. So like I said, I'm here in just planting this seed of support. I'm asking you to come out and visit. I have visited with some of you and would like to visit with the rest of you just to show what kind of potential we have there. And I'm not sure how eligible we are in which criteria with capital improvements or possibility of planning. Right now, promoting the garden and trying to get people is great because we do generate income through admissions. We are self-sufficient. We generate all of our income ourself. But right now, what we want to do is we want to plan. We want to plan to improve, and we want to plan to be able to sustain ourselves in the future. We want to be financially secure facility, and we don't want to be always asking for handouts. We can generate our own income through membership, through fundraising events, through admissions, through gift shop sales in different ways, and through grant writing to corporate foundations, to private foundations. But we're asking the city as well as the county for support to be able to help us to help ourselves. That's what we're after. And I really do think that, like I said, we can serve the community in so many different ways, and I hope that you will support this in some way that you can. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I think your Board has never asked us for contributions before, other than, what did we have, we helped purchase the expansion property, so...
Correct. The property was actually purchased by St. Lucie County, the city of Fort Pierce, the state of Florida, and forensic Heathcote, and the county does hold the deed to the property. And I know that, I was told that county money is not going to support nonprofit organizations. But I think we have just a bit of an edge over some of the other nonprofits because the county does own our facility. And we have not received any other funding. They have helped buy the additional one and a half acres along with the city so that we can expand, that we can build a visitor education center, so we could have classrooms for kids to come, and we can develop some programs that will, that will serve from the very youngest to the very oldest in our community. And so we're asking you to help us to help ourselves, is what we're asking.
I think you have your work cut out if you want further county donations.
It can be a great thing for this community.
But good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we back up just for a second? When I brought up the issue of the Smithsonian, it was, your statement was that we didn't want to set specific items in this resolution at this time. We'll deal with that at a later point. But I think the point I'm trying to get across is, on page four of the resolution, we specifically earmarked these dollars for the sports complex, for the equestrian facility, both of which I fully support. But I think we should include a specific item in there, saying the Marine Ecosystem Exhibit will be funded from this North County section. That's completely consistent with what we're doing here of identifying tourist-related capital projects that will be funded through this program. So I'd like to hear from the other Board members what their thoughts on are about just adding that additional language so that we can free up the original TDC dollars that we took away and give those back.
Mr. Chairman, can we wait for that discussion till after the public hearing, please?
Okay. Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Good morning. My name's Lisa Gilrain. I'm here representing the St. Lucie County Hotel Motel Association today. I believe that you received a letter from our President, Deanna Merrill, and I wanted to touch on that as well as the figures that Mr. Ribbit quoted this morning. The information that we put together and provided to him compared 24 similar counties, similar as far as size, similar as far as money generated from the bed tax. None of the communities have a bed tax of more than 4 percent. The figures that he put in here is the percentage of use in those counties for advertising is a little low, actually. It's more like 64 percent because in the survey, which I believe he provided you a copy of the original survey as well, all of those counties separately list administrative costs, grant costs, they divide their marketing and promotion into different segments, where in this county, we spend 25 percent to cover all of those items. So the difference is much more huge. Again, the Association does not oppose the increase in tax. You know, it is a small amount of money to each guest coming in. I don't think it's going to make us lose any business in the hotel industry. But without dedicating more dollars to marketing, you know, there is a figure in one of the letters provided to you that occupancies were down in the hotels this year. You know, without marketing and bringing more people in, how are we going to increase those occupancies? How are there going to be people coming into the county to tell their friends, to tell their neighbors what a great place it is? We need to capture some people through advertising and marketing to raise that base. Dreams Park obviously will do that. The Equestrian Center obviously will do that. But I see the Equestrian Center being much more positive, much more positively impacting the community if we're able to market it and promote it to the proper people. Without an increase in the advertising budget, the promotion budget, without adding additional sales staff to the county's tourist development... development office, how are we going to be able to do that? How's anybody going to know we have this fabulous facility here? I think that pretty much sums up what I have to say, and I really hope that you'll consider the recommendations that Mr. Coward has made. And I think that, like I said, going back to the survey and comparing what we spend as a county on tourism, advertising, and marketing, it's, it's just too low. It's not enough money. There's not enough, we don't have the means to properly assess our demographics, to know who to target, because if we take the money to spend on a survey, it's that much less we have for advertising. You know, I know that we asked for a public relations person to be hired. I know that that's been approved. But again, that salary takes away from money we have for marketing currently. So I really hope that you'll consider to set aside some of that money for advertising and promotions.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, you make a good point, but I have to return to my point, that if we hadn't built the, for example, the Smithsonian, and part of that was funding out of the advertising dollars, that $20,000, instead of going to a bunch of newspapers and magazines and God knows where, and hoping someone would answer, help create a first-class facility that people know about, will return to, and that's in the ground, it's not just a dream. And I think the same is true for Dreams Park South. That doesn't need any advertising dollars whatsoever, because the industry that is building that will bring all those people in themselves. That's how those people will come here, and for not $1 of advertising, you'll get all those room nights. As far as equestrian facility, again, we have an industry that tourists don't necessarily come to an equestrian facility. People involved in that, in that endeavor come, and they spend huge amounts of money on that sport, and then they come because they know that facility is available through their trade journals, and their word-of-mouth from all the shows that they attend. So, and every dollar that we spend on advertising is a dollar that we can't spend to create facilities just like that. So I certainly understand your position, but I, I would rather spend money, again, on the attractions than on the advertising. Okay, anybody else on this particular issue? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Back to the board. Commissioner Hutchinson, Commissioner Coward had an item you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I just had an idea of throwing out the Smithsonian, which I fully support. I always have. I just had discomfort about what funding source we were using. And I think it's appropriate, if we're going to pass this and come up with $890,000 for North County Tourism, that that appropriately fits into that category. And I think that would be a good way of freeing up some additional dollars, although they're limited, but some additional dollars for promotion and advertising, and kind of healing that past wound. I think it'd be a good gesture, a good step.
Well, and that wound was created because the folks on the TDC and some of the people in the industry wanted to spend that money on advertising rather than a facility. And so what we'd be doing is taking money currently being spent on that facility, and again, it'd be disappearing into advertising with no certainty of returns.
All right. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I've heard your opinion several times. I haven't heard that of our fellow board members.
What do y'all think?
Mr. Chairman, I think this was a long time coming, getting the wording to put together on this one, at least where I would even be halfway agreeable to it. I'm not in favor of changing it. I think it needs to stay where it is. You mentioned earlier that you had heard Commissioner Barnes say at one time that we need to polish the jewels in this county. Some of those jewels need help to be polished. And if it means putting it into capital improvements or capital projects for those, then I'm much more comfortable spending on those issues versus the marketing. The whole purpose of the marketing is to bring people here, but you have to have something for them to come to. And your funds are going to be increased over time as more tourists come through here. So I would like to give this a chance and let it see work. And if it doesn't, we still have the ability to go back and change it at a later time and place. So I mean, if we change it today, my vote's going against it.
Commissioner Byrne, did you have a comment?
I concur with Commissioner Hudson. I don't think it should be changed.
Anybody else?
Ms. Chairman, I'm not sure we need to change it. Perhaps Commissioner Coward wants it more specifically worded. But I think the way the ordinance reads now, page four, paragraph I, it does say, finance the reconstruction and renovation of the St. Lucie County Sports Complex, and to promote and advertise tourism in St. Lucie County and the State of Florida. And it also, in the next paragraph, in paragraph J, it says 67% shall go to the sports complex. But it then allocates, it only allocates specifically another $500,000 for the St. Lucie County Fairgrounds, Equestrian Facility. So it seems to me that although within the memo, there is another $839,000 stated to be put into capital projects, that's just the memo. That's not what we budgeted as yet. So I think the flexibility does exist, unless I'm looking at something terribly crooked here. We've only allocated the 67%, and I don't recall the dollar figure on that, and the $500,000. There is still another $839,000 that says it will be used for a capital match, but we have not determined that within the resolution. So I think the flexibility exists.
I guess with, as with the last issue, this is something that we could debate over at budget time. And you're right, that, a majority of the board at budget time could decide that that would go to, since it's north into the county, that could go to the Smithsonian rather than some other...
Yeah, my only question is whether it would actually qualify, because I think the way the language is written is for future capital projects, and it's an existing capital project that has a $20,000 subsidy, I think, for operation. So I'm not even sure if it would qualify.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And so I just think it appropriately fits in there. But, you know, clearly, that's not the will of the majority. I do feel a little uneasy with the fact that I was asked by this board to go and seek input from the Hotel Motel Association, which I've done on several occasions now. And I bring back those recommendations, and they fall on deaf ears. So I find that somewhat ironic. I think they've given us some very wise recommendations based on their experience within the industry, and they're suggesting to us that we can accomplish our goals to promote capital improvements that polish that silver, but let's add some additional dollars for promotion and advertising. I don't feel like we're doing that. I think the balance can be struck, but we're just not providing that flexibility.
Well, I see a million and a half in additional advertising if the projections come forward. And my ears aren't deaf. I just simply don't agree with the idea. And I would like to think that each industry always knows what's best for itself, but all I got to do is remind myself of the builder's position against impact fees, year in and year out, despite the fact that it helps them build a quality community. So I appreciate their input. I just don't agree with it. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'll agree. I'd like Commissioner Coward to know that their recommendations did not fall on deaf ears. I took, I took time out to listen today, to read the letters that have come through. And I, like Commissioner Barnes, happen just to disagree with where that money needs to go.
Okay, are we ready for a vote on the fifth cent move staff recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Commissioner Lewis.
Indicating once again, I feel the flexibility is there. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Coward.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Byrne?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Next up is Public Works, and who's going to talk about garbage? Leo, you're our garbage expert.
Leo Cordero, Solid Waste Manager. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the real reason is, is for, I guess, the board to decide if we want to put the solid waste collection and disposal on the tax roll, and if so, when. I can go into a couple of scenarios, and maybe lean on Mr. McIntyre to tell us what the time schedule will be if we go one way or another. But really, it's just to get direction as to which, which way to go and when.
Okay. I mean, this, why don't we get the legalities as far as when we need to do it, if we're going to do it? We may decide not to do it, but tell us the deadlines and what the consequences will be if we don't meet them.
Right. Mr. Chairman, for this, this coming year, for putting it on the tax bill, and the tax bill going out in November of '03, the board would need to adopt a resolution prior to March 1st of this year of '03. They would need the consent of the tax collector and the property appraiser. The advertisement would have to be advertised once a week for four consecutive weeks. We have time, but we would need to move probably today in order to, to accomplish that. The hearing would probably be February, I don't know, whatever the last meeting, 25th, or whatever that, that last Tuesday.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. Okay, February the 28th. We can do it, but it would need to be implemented immediately. And again, it would require the consent of the tax collector and the property appraiser.
Okay. And Leo, you're probably the one to tell us the advantages and disadvantages of doing this.
If, if, if we, if we were to put it on the tax roll, we certainly would do away with the lien process, which is, is, has been a, it's been a burden for a lot of people. I can tell you that 70% of the counties in, in the State of Florida are on the tax roll, and 85% of the population is on the tax roll. However, in this county here, you've got Port St. Lucie that does it exactly as we do, and the City of Fort Pierce, of course, is on the utility bill. So if we were to put it on, we might get a lower price. I just think it might be cleaner if we do it at the end of the contract, and maybe bid it, bid it, and take the price both ways. Take it, take it, what would, what would the price be per home, per month, if it was on the taxes, and the same if it were to continue to go as it is.
Okay, so you have a specific recommendation?
My recommendation would be to, to bid it, bid it when this contractor expires, when this contract expires September 30th, 2004. We've got enough time to make any amendments that we'd want to make to it, advertise it, go out to bid, and award in time to the low bidder.
Okay, that sounds like a long way away, but that's only a year and a half, and your bid process takes, last time we did this, took about eight months, didn't it, to get through, and...
It would, if we were to do it, if we were to do it when the present contract runs out, we've, we've got enough time to do it, advertise it, and make changes, and do whatever. But we don't have a whole lot of time. If you were to decide to do it right now, by the time you'd implement it, there'd be 10 months left of the present contract. So it probably almost makes sense.
When you say, if we decide to do what, bid it?
If you decide to put it on the tax roll as soon as you could.
Right.
The earliest it would be on would be November, this coming November, and, and 10 months left of the existing contract at that time.
Okay. And you had given us a very good memo, talking about money, what the savings would be for the ratepayer, but then what the added cost would be. Do you have a net effect at this time?
If, we, we've estimated it would cost about 70 cents per home, per month, to put it on the tax roll.
And what would the savings be?
And, and the last bid showed a $1.12 decrease if it went under the tax roll. So if you, if you put those two together, you're almost need, you almost need $1.80. You need $1.80 to, to take that deduction as well as absorb the cost. So when you rebid it, again, you might have that $2. You might have a $3 spread. I would, I would guess that you'd have a $3 spread next time you do it, if you did it both ways.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Cordero, or any comments? I'd told our current hauler I'd allow him a very brief presentation, if he could, wanted to come forward and explain to us, any advantages. Yes, we, we...
Could we have our...
Yes, sir. Let's, let's discuss this up here, sir, just for a moment. Yes, sir. Commissioner Coward?
Mr. Cordero gave an explanation about, basically a recommendation, I think, that it would be cleaner if we waited, because then we can rebid the process. But I wanted to get clarification, because I thought when we did this initially, that we did, in fact, include different rate options, depending on which was selected by the county, whether it was through the lien process or through the tax rolls. So in essence, haven't we already put out a bid through this process that includes language that if you were to put on the tax roll, the lower rate would go into effect?
Yes, but, but, correct me, Mr. McIntyre, if I'm wrong. I believe we did it so that we could make a decision at that time which way we wanted to go. And, and the board decided to take the rate for having the hauler bill.
I don't disagree with that, but I think the real legal question is, does it preclude us from choosing a different alternative, if it makes more sense for the community and actually lowers the rate for each homeowner?
No.
So essentially, we have laid out the process through this previous bidding. If the board felt it was the appropriate thing, we're not violating our, our existing contract with them. We have that option to actually make that improvement if this board sees fit to do so.
Right. Now, I ask this to be put on the agenda, so that we would meet the deadline if three members wanted to. If we don't, then we can drop back and do as Mr. Cordero suggests, and wait till the next bid process. But we do need to make a decision one way or another. Anybody else before we hear from the hauler? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first, it's always a pleasure to come before you. We've been working for you for three and a half years.
Can you identify yourself? We know who you are.
Sid Lee, Jr., Florida Recycling Services, 4100 Selvits Road, St. Lucie County. For three and a half years, we've been working for you. And as I come before you from time to time, I'd just like to quickly state that your service report, which I do give you, for the last 12 months, we've had just a few complaints unresolved per the contract, just over 100. That's not per month, but for the last 12 months. I reported to you last year that the previous 12 months of the total complaints for that period was 132. So this is just a short report. We still have everything under control. As a matter of fact, the biggest problem that we're having is the billing, the quarterly billing, where there is confusion as to change of property owners, and that all relates to billing. The thing that we would like to point out, you have the cheapest garbage rates within the region. You're now at, we bill you 12.29. But we really don't get 12.29. The pass-through to Mr. Cordero's landfill is, in fact, $3.60. So our portion of the contract where we pick up garbage and pick up recycling is only 8.69. In the event that you go to the tax roll during our contract period, we have a commitment where we reduce the billing to $11.17. At that point, our fee for garbage hauling and recycling, keep in mind, you still get your 3.60 for landfill charges. Our charge goes to a meager $7.57. That is the cheapest rate for this service in this entire region of the state. So the true question that you need to ask yourselves, how can you continue to deliver quality service at the cheapest price? Keeping in mind that Fort Pierce is nudging $14 per customer per month, and Port St. Lucie, which bid last year, and we were in the, among the finalists, is pushing $14 a month. That's the new legitimate rates. We feel that garbage has been a political issue. There is no doubt about it. There is a rough history of dealing with garbage in St. Lucie County. Next year, looking at going on the tax roll in conjunction with a new bid, you're right in the middle of an election year. And I believe that there are commissioners that, that really do feel sincerely, the way to ensure the cheapest price and the best service is to go on the tax roll. We have time this year, in a non-political year, to lessen controversy, and not have this blown-out-of-proportion in the election campaigns, to take this through orderly and in good business with plenty of time to put it on the tax roll. We would like to see that done, and we as your contractor, we as taxpayers, and incidentally, our principals, and I speak with that hat on, too, this morning, who have been 20-year taxpayers, residentially speaking, would like to urge you to do it this year. If it's done now, the process is in place, it's tried and true, and the contractors can come in next year and orderly, with tried-and-true process, bid and give you the most competitive rates that you can get. And we feel that, due to the history, and probably the most important thing I'm going to say, and as most of you know, I come from government and have a history, and this is a controversial issue. Lake County is the only other contract, besides Pahokee, Florida, the city with only about 500 residents, of 32... 500 residents of 32 full customers. Lake County went to the tax roll last year. Lake County has the same history as you have, a lot of controversy. They did two things last year. They went to mandatory service, and they went to the tax roll. In the end, because of the public hearing process, you see, you go through the initial public hearings, which is a check and balance, and then the majority of you determine if you go forward. This is the study period. The second check and balance is the budget process. If you survive the initial public hearings, which, as your attorney said, is over the next several months, then you put the proper figures within the budget, and then you have a second shot at it, and your citizens have a second shot at it. You can elect it to go forward or kill it during the budget process. So really, it's a two-step check and balance that you have as county commissioners this year or any other year. But I want to state that Lake County, in the end, had all the chambers of commerce, and they had only about 20 citizens in the audience in the end that were complaining. The vast majority really wanted it. And I believe the truth is, as your hauler, we hear all the time, if they would just put it on the tax roll, it would be so simpler. I wouldn't have these billing problems. There wouldn't be so much confusion. So we believe that garbage without the tax roll, as I reported to you last year, is headed for the mid 14s. Again, look at Fort Pierce and look at Fort St. Lucie, and they're right at $14. So we believe, and we would urge you, in the name of what is in the best interest of your citizens for competitive garbage, an orderly process, staying away from next year's politics, that you strongly, strongly consider doing it this year rather than next year. Now, the only intricacy that would cause a problem would be the recycling in Fort Pierce. If you put it on the tax roll, we, for the remaining months, we would have, from October 1st, 2003, to September 30, 2004, would have tax roll payments for the St. Lucie County garbage, yard trash, and recycling customers. We would continue to bill Fort Pierce. Incidentally, our big accounts receivable problem is mainly the St. Lucie County portion of the contract. We have very good collection records, for some reason, for the recycling in Fort Pierce. So we would continue to bill that. So everything would work out fine. And again, we do believe it is in your best interest and the taxpayer's best interest to act this year. And again, and I am sorry to repeat it, stay out of the politics of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Valine? Any comments, motions, suggestions?
Mr. Chairman, if if our garbage hauler is so confident they can lower the price, I don't see why they wouldn't want to put it out for bid. If they want to put it out for bid right now so everybody can have an opportunity to do it in a non-election year, that's fine. But I'm more in step with waiting till the contract ends and then putting it out for bid.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In essence, I feel like that's been done, because we did go out to bid, and they were the low bidder for both the private collection slash lean approach, and this is what I want to verify, as well as through the tax roll collection process, too. Were they not?
Yes.
So they were the low bidder in both cases. So it's not a need to go back out and bid. We've done that already, and they came in as the low bidder under both approaches. The question is, what's the best approach for St. Lucie County? And I think that's what we should be focusing on. And right now, if you look at the billing problems that Mr. Valine described, you know, essentially what you're looking at is bad debt they're having to incur as a part of not getting collections from a minority of the residents. As a result, they have to raise the rate on everyone else, so that the vast majority of residents in the community have to pay a premium above what it should cost them to make up for those that aren't paying. So we can avoid that extra premium by putting it on the tax rolls and making everyone have to pay it, thereby reducing the rate by a dollar per household per month, and still getting the same service. We can actually save each of our taxpayers money and still provide a service. So I don't think the issue is whether we should bid it again right now. It's already been bid. They were the low bidder. The question is, what's the best approach to actually implement the program? And I think the tax roll approach is better. The last comment I have is this lean approach. I mean, we have to read about elderly folks being kicked out of their homes because a private collection company is coming in, you know, through the lean process. That's not the best way to handle this. 85% of the people in the state of Florida are having their solid waste handled through tax rolls with local governments. I think it's time for St. Lucie County to do the same.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre, if we were to move forward today, that wouldn't require us to eventually implement it on the tax roll. It would just give us the option, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's it's like the things we do in December. We do all those public hearings and we adopt resolutions. They preserve the option of of levying the the assessment on the roll. You would still have to hold public hearings and actually adopt a roll and before that could happen. But you can't even do that without adopting the resolution. So but again, that if we're going to go forward this year, we would need to start the advertising immediately, and so we could get the hearing on the 28th. If we don't do that, then what we'll need to do is wait till next year, and we probably ought to, particularly if if the contract expires in '04, we probably ought to schedule this for public hearing in December.
Yes.
A resolution so it preserves the option, if we're going to bid it, to go to the tax roll.
Okay. Personally, I agree with Commissioner Coward. I've always felt it should be on the tax roll. I think money is saved. Today, we don't have to make that decision only to preserve our option. I'm also disappointed the hauler hadn't suggested that perhaps they might give us an even better rate if it were on the tax roll, because they're the ones that are eating most of the bad debt. But Commissioner Coward's right, it costs us all more when we have to pay the bad debt of those who aren't paying. How does the rest of you feel as far as preserving the option? Do you want to do that, or do you want to forego that for another? Would we would it be for a year that we lose our right to do this?
You couldn't do it in in November of '03. What I've suggested to Mr. Cordero is that we schedule this, if the board decides not to go ahead this year, we schedule this for public hearing in November, December of this year for next for '04. So when we bid it, we'll have that option as well.
Okay, but and I've been through two garbage wars, I guess. And Leo, one of the problems with the bidding last time was we weren't on the tax roll. So every hauler that bid had to wonder what their bad debt was going to be. And then I think we ended up with higher rates, because they didn't they weren't sure. And if it's on the tax roll, you always get a better rate than if it's hauler-collected, don't you? I mean, isn't that a always, always, always? You never get a better rate by letting the hauler collect the bills, because they have a lot of bad debt they can't collect.
If if I go back to the days when I was a private hauler, if I bid a contract that could go either way, I was nervous, because if you put it on the way we have it today, I I would be suffering that bad debt. If I bid a contract that absolutely was going to go on the tax roll, I would sharpen my pencil as much as I could, because I knew one of the problems I wasn't going to have was collection. So if you bid it both ways, I was a little nervous. If you bid it just on the tax roll, absolutely, you'd get the lowest price.
Were you aware of any community in the state of Florida that has a lower that held a bid process and bid for hauler collections was cheaper than the bid for tax roll? And do you think that's ever happened in the history of garbage collection?
No, I don't think you'll ever get a.
So we know, as a board, we know that we'll get a better rate for ratepayers if it's on the tax roll, whether it's through this company or the next company that bids. So I would urge us to consider at least keeping our option open by passing this today. So we will need a motion or further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I recommend approval of keeping this option open.
Is there a second?
Mr. McIntyre, could you help me make a more specific motion to allow for this process to move forward for further consideration?
Right. What I what I interpret the motion to mean is that you request permission to advertise for a public hearing on February 28th to consider adoption of a resolution that would keep the option open for this calendar year.
That is my intent with my motion.
Okay, is there a second? Hearing none, I'll pass the gavel over to the vice chairman, and I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bruin?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Coward?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Vice Chair?
No, ma'am. And I shall pass the gavel back.
Okay. We'll move on now to biweekly committee reports, and, okay. Commissioner Bruin needs to leave. We'll make you do your reports next time, Commissioner Bruin. Give us written reports. All right, Commissioner Hutchinson, do you want to start the committee reports?
Well, I only had the one meeting Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and that was canceled in December. We've not had one since.
Okay. Commissioner Lewis?
Children's Services Council was pretty much a a normal business meeting. Cultural Affairs Council, I'm sorry to admit that I missed the meeting, because there seems to have been a glitch in the notification process, which I understand will be taken care of. But I mention it because I would like to report that we there is a new executive director for the council, and he is taking hold of things and and really making things happen. I understand he's reaching out to the the cities. He's visited a lot of the facilities, touched bases with a lot of the groups in the county, and I'm just really pleased at the the energy and enthusiasm that I'm seeing, and I think some good things are going to come out of that. Transportation LCB meets quarterly. I don't believe we've had a meeting within this last period.
And let's see, the Blue Way Advisory Committee, for me, didn't meet. The Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors met, but I wasn't able to attend. Property and homeowners, we did attend and had a good discussion on MSBUs and MSTUs. And yesterday, I did attend a meeting down at the PGA, and it was regarding the Dreams Park South, a very interesting meeting. And let me just tell you who attended the meeting as possible investors in this venture for Dreams Park South. PGA of America had a representative there, Coulter Property Company had a representative there, Wachovia Bank had a representative, Rawlings Corporation, the manufacturer of sporting goods, Pepsi had a representative, Delta, Age of Travel, Kodak Company, Justin Awards, they make trophies and rings, et cetera, Turner Broadcasting System, and Tropicana all had representatives there, and may very well end up investing in this venture along with Dreams Park South to make this a reality. So it was an exciting meeting, and I think we're on the fast track to success there. So any other item that any board member wishes to bring to the board's attention?
Just my.
Yes, sir.
Just the committee, just to finish the committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip you?
It's okay. I don't have a lot of exciting news anyways. Very briefly, on the the fire district, the primary discussion, I thought, was one that we've been, of course, interested in the CRAs. As we've been saying for quite some time, be aware of the potential impact of these CRAs on the various taxing authorities, and that is, of course, coming true. In the case of the fire district, the impact on the fire district went from about $10,000 to over $100,000 in one year's time. The taxable values within the CRA jumped so substantially that the impact on the fire district, combined between the Port St. Lucie and Fort Pierce CRAs, is approaching a quarter of a million dollars. So to take that amount of money from the fire district, who's providing public safety needs, is quite a concern. And of course, the fire chief has thrown up the red flag, saying, I'm not sure I can provide adequate service with all this new development coming in and no requisite funding to help me. So this is a serious issue that needs to be dealt with. To date, it has not. But the CRA has a particular impact on our fire district, because it's the only fire district in the state that's its own taxing authority for the entire community. So there's a direct hit to it, unlike other communities where it doesn't have that. So that's a substantial issue.
Can you, just for those who don't know what a CRA is, I forget, sometimes we talk in acronyms. A lot of people don't know what that is, but they may read about it in the paper.
Yes, CRA is a Community Redevelopment Agency, which is basically a tool for redevelopment, one that I fully support. But it can be abused, and it is, in this particular case, and it's really a situation, as I described, the fire district is unique in St. Lucie County. So we need to handle it in a unique fashion and pull it out from the impact of the CRA. We need to continue to support the CRAs to help with redevelopment in downtown Fort Pierce and in CRA on Village Green in Fort St. Lucie. But I'm just particularly concerned about the the impact on the fire district, because it's providing such an important service to our community.
So the property taxes are going to the Community Redevelopment Agency boards rather than to the fire district in this case?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I can I ask Commissioner Coward a question on that? Have you all looked at actually going to the legislation, since they're the ones that are enacting that as a special district?
We have.
And ask them to your help?
We have, and we were told to deal with it at a local level. We've tried at the local level, and we've been rebuffed, because the local CRA boards, of course, see that as a large funding source to help them with all these different projects. So there has to be a balance struck at the local level of saying, yes, we need this new revenue stream to help us implement these new programs, but at the same time, not jeopardizing public safety. And that's where I feel like we're out of balance right now. We can't not provide funding to the fire district to provide fire safety and, you know, emergency medical services. It's absolutely essential. You have to cover those costs. And that's where we're out of whack right now. We have to we have to balance that. The second issue in the last Regional Planning Council meeting we had, just to give you a heads up, is there's, of course, no funding coming from the state, no increased funding from the state to help the Regional Planning Council fund its continuing efforts. In fact, there's a decline proportional to the the growing needs within the community. So there's discussion at the Regional Planning Council about going back to the respective local governments and trying to get some additional financial assistance. Of course, Palm Beach County, it pays the majority of the Regional Planning Council's bill, because it's on a per-population basis. But I want to forewarn you that that issue will be back before this board, probably in the next month or so.
Okay, very good. I neglected to add the additions item, R-A1 for the regular agenda, and who's going to take this item? Do we need any explanation?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, this is the item the board dealt with last week, where it agreed to consent to sign the plat of North Point. I've written a letter consistent with that, the board's approval, because it was contingent upon an acknowledgement that the county was not abandoning its Artier LA right of way. I spoke briefly with Mr. Fee, who has provided advice on real estate issues for a number of years to the county, and he suggested we record something in the public records. In that regard, I've drafted a resolution, 03-29, which, if adopted, would formalize the board's position consenting to the plat, but just indicating that the the consent did not mean we abandoned the right of way, and that would need to be done by formal vacation. And it does direct me to record this in the public records. And I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you not sign the plat until we get an acknowledgement of the letter, which I have not received back yet. Staff recommends that the board adopt the resolution, 03-29.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just have it unanimously. Time to adjourn now, as a board of county commissioners? Is there a motion? Okay, we adjourn. Who's vice chair of Mosquito District?
You all know.
No, we don't know.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Ah, yeah, I knew that.
We'll come to order St. Lucie County Mosquito Control District, January 28th. First on the agenda, the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 14th.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. General public comment? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's no discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.